Recording in progress.
Okay, we will begin. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, regular meeting of the Blue Lake City Council. Our first item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Would you establish a quorum of the council, Mandy?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mayor Proctor Scholl, present. Councilmember Michael?
Here.
Councilmember Stefani?
Here.
And Councilmember Edgar is here. Okay. Item two on our agenda is to approve the agenda. First, from council, is there anyone that would like to move anything around, change anything? I've got to see what needs to be changed. Okay. Then I'll go out to public to see if there's anyone who is here for a specific agenda item. We can always move things around a little. Good, okay. Back to council for a motion and a second.
And approve.
My second. Elizabeth McCay moves, second by Angela Scholl, to approve the agenda as delivered. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. It passes. Item three is our public comment time. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the stope and authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? I just saw a hand up there. I don't know when it came up. It possibly is Julie Christie. If that's a public comment here or something else. Okay. Can I see Lisa in the audience? Mike, you're standing? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready. But I'll let the person on line go first.
Okay. Julie, did you want to make a public comment at the public comment time?
Yes, that line, that'd be fine. I have noticed being pretty attentive to the rest of our county and city recordings that generally they will just have everybody that's in-house do theirs and then go to people on the web, but you can choose as you wish. In regards to the proposed housing element, is it truly consistent with our general plan? And at what point prior was community input or outreach utilized in the drafting process? How will responses to the drafts be addressed that are currently due by the 29th? Or will they be put on the bike rack? Let alone the concerns of our remaining wastewater treatment capacity being used up by approved and proposed development projects in the city? And the implications of grants and funding are not obtained along with potential fallacies of building a historical collecting? Is the inclusion of a density bonus? Will the city fall through with allowing 80% to low-income units and 20% to moderate? And potentially weigh in conflicting local development standards if they fill the need? As well as take advantage of the increasing of the units 35 to 50% on a number of allowed per project, as included with a density bonus? Will the HTD review letter for the city be available to the public? And who is our HTD reviewer? It's disheartening to see the verdicts directed at low-income senior housing and the proposed housing element. Low-cost senior housing has and should always be a priority in our general plan, housing element, and our community. Yes, if project gear for senior living would need accommodations of potentially, quote, ramps, handrails, lower-cut boards, and counters to allow greater accessibility. However, to assume that all low-income seniors have mobility issues is quite a leap to be in our housing element, as well as stating surrounding communities would be a better benefit. Low-income senior living is extremely hard to come by because most potential sites are already built without consideration of potential needs of seniors in the future. Starting from the ground up, facilitate all needs, as well as provide other low-income families and locals an opportunity to help assist with daily needs, such as cleaning groceries, medications, doctor's appointments. Of course, that's assuming they would even need those assistance. Retail space would then be enjoyed by a complete retired group of individuals, potentially prioritizing food options, as well as a potential gem that community can enjoy as well. I stand by low-cost senior living over the visions of artisans, as previously stated in numerous times and by city manager reports, given at both arts and heritage and economic development commissions. And as my hope tonight, we'll get a current update this evening during the manager's report. Thank you for my right to speak, and as always, please take advantage of any and all community input and interactions as the city progresses with any future proposal actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you for your comment. Uh, okay. Three minutes. And Lisa, did you want to finish this up?
Hi, my name is Lisa Hooper. And similar topic that we were, when I went to the webpage to look at the agenda for tonight, I saw it under quick links and notices about the housing development, the draft housing development that was going to be, they wanted comments within seven days, which ends Thursday. And just to go back, on August 29th, 2022, I went back and looked at meetings, and the comments from the California Department of Housing, Community Development, HCD, were provided. That was August 29th of 2022 in the minutes. And then in November, Gary Reese, the planner, provided overview of the HCD request at the planning commission meetings. And then on February 20th, the planning commission minutes posted in March, Reese provided an update, and he said that the staff is getting close to finishing response to the account of the commission, the community development commission. And there are significant revisions have been made to the draft housing element. And I will repeat, that was a quote, significant revisions per what was done in June and July of last year. Given that there are significant revisions, and I go to quick links and notices on the webpage and find that seven days are allowed for the public to make comment on that. And what if some of these significant revisions have to do with multifamily developments? Not that that's bad, good, but includes upzoning of some parcels of our town and increasing the flexibility of the city to change zoning, make it easier to change zoning at short notice. So given that it's a significant change to what I reviewed in May of 2022 and made comments on, and I would ask that the council have the planning commission, and if any of you read this, the legalese and the language is very hard, and there's a lot of changes, and it's significant. I would ask that the council ask the commission to have a meeting that focuses on the nuances, the implications of these changes of zoning, multi-housing residential high zoning is one of them. Where are these going to happen? They have a map, but they don't connect a parcel number with the map. And also, what are the ideas about that? There are opportunities, I see that, but it hasn't been communicated. Could be a significant change to the community, and that hasn't been communicated very well. And we were given seven days to comment. So I'm asking the council to direct the planning commission to have a meeting that focuses on this, because Gary Reese did an amazing job, no doubt, but I don't understand it. And implications are significant, a quote from him. So I would ask that there be a planning commission meeting and then an extension of the response time for the community to have to, based upon after that meeting, so we can get a little bit more clear understanding of the implications. Because again, it's upzoning of parcels in our town. We've already got some opportunities on down in Powrex Creek. Where else is this going to happen, this upzoning? And I think the community would like to know that. So I think that the seven-day response by the community is too short, and we need a little bit more education about this, because it is significant. And so I would like to ask the council to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
When will I find out?
Okay, we can't, we can't discuss anything during this time, because this is not agendized.
The comments to do on, day after tomorrow, and they're only given seven days for significant changes, so.
Okay, Mike, you're next.
Yeah. Evening.
Hi.
Hello, I'm Supervisor Mike Wilson, third district supervisor. I know some of you, some of you I don't. And I would like to make it more of a habit to stop in here. That's really in, kind of introducing myself to some of the newer members of the council this evening. And I got an email from Elise asking to have a meeting. And I thought to myself, you know what? I haven't been for your council in a long time, and so I thought I would come by and stop, stop in. This is the day when we have board meetings, and they generally go all day. And so a lot of times I just kind of go home and unload a little bit and maybe go for a run or something. But tonight I decided I'd stop in. And so I just wanted to let you know that I'm here, and I do, I'm in regular communication with your city manager. We met this week with some of our staff, as well as Sheriff's Department and CFW, talked about all kinds of issues around Blue Lake, where we interface having to do with trails and land use issues, traffic, and the Hatchery Road, as well as the Annie and Mary's, oh, pardon me, and a whole host of issues. And so we just, you know, we needed to check in post-COVID in person, and that was really great. So I just wanted to thank your city manager and your staff for being available to have that communication. We'll probably do it more often now that we're kind of back in the swing of things, you know, from the before times. And did you get an email back from me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. Sorry. That's all right. And so anyways, I just wanted, it just spurred me to feel like I need to come down here and let everybody know, I'm actually pretty easy to get ahold of. If you go to the website for the county, the email is right there. Send me an email. I will set up time to meet if you need to, either here in Blue Lake or anywhere else you want to meet, talk about any of the issues that you want to interface with, that have either connectivity with Blue Lake or not. So, and there's a lot going on in the county now that we interface with and could in the future. There's discussions around, I mean, we serve on JPA, JPAs together, which are joint powers authorities having to do with traffic, but also HTA, which is the transit authority, as well as, as well as HWMA, which is the garbage. And then there's also, we're probably looking at doing some regional housing trust fund work, so where we actually look at instead of interfacing more on our REA numbers, which is, which is kind of being discussed here a little bit in relationship to our responsibilities to provide housing, and how we might talk about that from a regional perspective, as opposed to just a jurisdictional perspective, and how we can partner on some of those activities. And so just letting you know that we're here, we're doing a lot, we're having Measure Z discussions today, and that was very intense and interesting, because we just don't have the same amount of money under Measure Z as we once had. And a lot of obligations have only grown, and so we have some challenges around that coming up for sure. And that's about it. And I know this is not a question-and-answer time, I'm not going to do that with you here, but if you want to do that with me anytime, please email me. I always say email's better, just because then I know I got it, I can respond to it. If you're not an email person, there's a phone number on the website as well. I'm happy to do that. How's it? Just the intro, hello. How are you, Liz?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, see you guys.
Good night. For checking in.
Running.
Good night.
Is there any other public comment? Yes. Sir, I don't know your name. You're not obligated to tell us, it would be nice for the record.
Well, I think we should be having it, Scott Fraser, Blue Lake. I was actually here for another item on your agenda, but I did take a quick look at the housing element on the city office desk. So I'd like to say three things on non-agendized items. First, I want to support Lisa Hooper's request that you have the planning commission schedule workshop for this thick document that none of us can really relate to in its entirety. Secondly, I think a graphic presentation and a map highlighting the upzoning locations geographically would be very helpful, just the first one myself. I like to visualize those kind of geographic elements. And third, I'd like to request a 30-day extension of public comment.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah. Erin McClure. Erin.
I'm also going to, I'd like to say I'd like to back Lisa Hooper's request, first of all, but that's not really what I'm here to talk about today. So what I'm here to talk about today is I'm not really sure if everybody on the city council understands where the city water tanks are located. One tank is located on what used to be Peter Busman's land, but was taken from him by eminent domain. And one tank is located on McClure Trust property, which is a property that I own, that my grandparents owned. So in 1911, my great-great-grandmother put together the city water, put together an agreement with the city to have their water tanks on our property. And now that lease agreement has expired. It actually has expired quite some time ago. So we are still operating on the lease agreement from 1911, and a new agreement needs to be put together. So after several attempts of making a meeting with our city manager, I finally was able to put one together. And I think it was April 14th, I met with her and my trust attorney, Amy Stoker, and we have decided together and with the help of another attorney, that the city of Blue Lake needs to put together a lease agreement proposal. And for McClure Trust and the sort of trust attorneys, and we need to start working on getting this put together. It was unfortunate that during our meeting, the fire alarm went off, and our city manager had to run off to a fire call. So hopefully there'll be other meetings concerning this, and soon I will hear back from the city on our proposed lease agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Anybody on Zoom? I see another hand. It's just a phone number. I can't. It's just a phone number.
Oh.
But there is a hand. Yeah. The phone, the phone number on Zoom, we see your hand up. Are you ready for public comment?
Maybe she forgot to take it down from before.
Yeah, that could be.
So I have a protocol question. So when, when there is something going on like this housing element, which with the comment period expiring day after tomorrow, can we decide to discuss it here tonight?
From what I understand, if there is a need to take action, since the posting of the agenda, if we see an urgency, then we do have that ability. I can defer to staff on that, but that's what I recall.
A non-agendized item.
Right.
You can't take action on a non-agendized item.
Right. I mean, I know in the past, when I was on the council and we had our attorney, it's not used often, but there is a time when, if you feel there's an emergency item, then the council can vote to.
Well, does it have to be an emergency, like you know, the town's flooding? Or can it be a time since an issue, like we don't have another opportunity to extend the comment period if we don't do it today?
It's usually an emergency. Right. Okay, so legislative body may not take action on any item not properly and timely placed on the agenda with three narrow exceptions. When a majority decides there is an emergency situation, as defined for emergency meetings. When there is a need for immediate action and the need to take the action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted, or when there was a continuance that's not more than five days earlier.
So I would think that we would qualify under that second.
So just for clarification, the housing element is with the planning commission. It's not before the council is still going through the process. So the planning commission is the entity that's dealing with housing element at this point. So eventually it will come to council, but at this point it's going through the process that is, is the responsibility of the planning commission. So the comments will go to the planner, and he will take those to the planning commission to address at the planning commission meeting. So the token has another opportunity to, to engage in this process. This is not a city council item at this point.
Okay. Yeah.
So can I ask a question, Mandy? So when it goes back to the planning commission, if they're, they can choose to have another comment period, is that correct?
I believe the planning commission can take whatever action is necessary for them to, to make a decision.
And can you give me just a tiny bit of background?
This is a non-agendized, I know, so I, we're, we're going outside of the scope of what we're supposed to be discussing. I mean, if we want to stick to the rules, we don't think that we should be engaging.
Point of order, I believe a council member can ask a question and expect a response from staff without it being an agendized item.
It's not time for public comment.
Okay. Okay, so we have received all public comments from folks. Yeah.
Okay. Angela Bear, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to also say that there was not enough time for us to do anything with the information that we were given if it's only a seven-day period. I know that you guys are saying it has nothing to do with the council yet, but I just wanted to let y'all know I agree with Lisa, and I would like longer discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think we're going to have to cut off the public comment at this point, and you have had a chance already once to speak on, at the public comment time. All right. We're now on item four, city council meeting video recording update, discussion and direction. The city council has directed staff to research options for recording and managing council video recordings. Staff have reached out to various cities to request information on their systems, as well as to Access Humboldt, the city's partner agency, to recommend a system that will provide an enhanced professional option. Access Humboldt is working with the city manager on this project. Funding is available through the city's COVID allocation to purchase equipment and conduct installation activities. So it looks like we're moving forward on the recording aspect of our council. Did you want to, is there any further information on that, Mandy?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to, to offer. I had a call with Access Humboldt today. We had it scheduled for 2:30, but they were unable to make the call. So I anticipate I'll probably be talking with them tomorrow. They're going to come out and look at the room and give us some ideas on how we can set up a system. I've talked with Trinidad and Riedel and some of the other cities about their systems and their recording process. Our system is going to be a little bit different, just because we don't always have access to this facility. And so we have, will have the need to, much like what Justin is doing, probably set up a system, take it down, but there could be some opportunities to do some hardwiring possibly. So they're going to come out, and they have that technical expertise to be able to help us with that.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from council about this item?
Is what Justin's doing sufficient?
You know, honestly, I haven't watched the videos, but it seems like the clarity is good and the recording is, I don't know if you want to provide a little feedback, Justin?
So, I mean, I have some more equipment that I plan on purchasing myself to improve my video capability. Audio capability is about as good as I can get without spending some pretty good money. I found a mic system that's about 300 bucks that would put a microphone in front of nearly every person, but I'm not ready to invest that kind of money at this time. There's a lot of other systems that, and ways in which people can communicate. I know you guys like to use Zoom. I have offered Mandy an alternative to that. I have, we have yet to meet up and have a conversation about this other system yet. I know she's got a lot of other stuff to worry about, too. I did have a question about, if I were to, say, have my own alternative for a private citizen to, or a member to comment through my system, would I be able to get them recognized where they could make a comment, you know, a public comment to you guys if I were controlling it, to where they could speak through my system? Basically, an alternative to Zoom. It was just a, an idea that I had.
Yeah, I'm not really sure on that. We have to, I'm not really sure about having like two systems. So we have to look into that a little bit more.
But what you're recording now is showing up on YouTube, isn't that correct?
Yes, I post, I post them up on YouTube when I'm, when I get them, the video processed.
I'd like to thank Justin for doing this work. 100% volunteer. I think you're wonderful, and this has opened up some doors for a lot of people, and so thank you so much. That being said, I have watched several of the videos, and I'm grateful to have them. But, you know, I think that the city should be buying equipment to improve the quality and, and have microphones where they're appropriate and that sort of thing. So I'm in favor of the city cracking open the wallet and making this an official city-sponsored situation. And at some point, perhaps, when we get it all together, we can let Justin off, perhaps. Because he's putting in a lot of hours doing this, and it's a tremendous community service. But I bet that there's going to be a point where he doesn't want to.
Well, in your discussions, Mandy, with Access Humboldt, do they have an idea of what their timeline is as far as being able to?
I mean, I think we're probably a pretty simplified system. So, you know, they do this for a lot of other cities where they, they can manage the video feeds and everything and uploaded to Access Humboldt. And we're a member of that, of that, I don't know if it's technically a JPA. So I believe they were, they're probably pretty well-versed and can give us a pretty quick response.
So they're coming out here?
Yeah, so we were going to talk, like I said, we were supposed to talk today. They didn't make the call, so I anticipate we'll probably talk tomorrow. And they did mention that they'd like, and I asked that they could come out and look at the space and give us some feedback, because we do have issues. You know, we have a southern exposure with the sun this time of night. That sometimes causes problems and, you know, so just trying to think about how things are set up, it's sometimes hard to get enough. You probably need a wide-angle camera to be able to capture everything, then you have the sound issues, and that we are a little bit, you know, we don't have, we only have the wall plugs, you know, so we don't have, I don't know that we have anything in the floor to be able to plug things into. So there's just some logistics we've got to figure out, but I don't think it should be, should be too difficult.
All right. So we'll get an update at the next meeting about that. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from council before we have to cover the comment on this item? All right, is there any comments from the public concerning this item? Yes. Angela?
Angela, again. So I had asked if we could be recording the other meetings besides just this city council meeting, because a lot of us would like to be able to attend all of the meetings, and currently they're not being Zoomed. So it was my understanding, Justin, you said something, I believe, about the equipment, that we would be able to Zoom meetings if you got better equipment. So I would like to say I would like all the meetings Zoomed, so I could watch all the meetings. And we want more participation from the public, and that would make it happen. So there's lots of times I can't come. So I know it's that way with other people, too. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I see some hands up. Lynn, did you have a comment on this item? Lynn Glenn?
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. I am really pleased to see the council talking about this and the staff is making some changes to make this happen. I know, I'd heard that the meetings were on YouTube right now, but the link on the agenda was for the old July recording from last year. So I'm wondering if there's any way to be connected, or if we can get some direction as to how to get to the YouTube videos of the meetings that Justin's put up. Should be great. And then I also, and I believe... And then I also, I believe on that site, this link to the city, the public, the public planning commission meeting is on that site. So that has been recorded at times, I don't know if it's consistent. And I believe the public safety commission's meeting as well. But I agree that if it's possible to get all the meetings recorded, that would be great. But thank you all for dealing with this, because I think we're all on the same page that public access is really important. Thanks again.
Thanks for your comment, Lynn. Is there another hand there? Julie, okay. Did you want to?
Hey, guys.
Did you, did you want to talk about this agenda item?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I jump in at the wrong time?
We are on, we're on floor.
Recordings, I wanted to just tell Justin, thank you. I'm like doing this the whole time you guys are there, and you have no idea how much is to have this option. So Justin and I, we have a pork chop, don't forget. And, and one. With getting the other meetings recorded and ready for it, so we get access to that. As well as, I'm still to see that our COVID funding is finally going to its purpose. You guys know I've been an advocate for like since the beginning of COVID. But just to let you know, I can hear everything great down here, okay? I've got birds and critters, and I always hear you guys parade, gather a little sunshine. But all the little teeny things, they don't matter to somebody like me who appreciates this option. So in the transition that you guys are doing this, please don't leave out any of our meetings, okay? Thank you very much, and, and I appreciate that you're moving forward with this.
Thank you for your comment. It's good to know that she can hear everything from the farm down there, for the ranch. Any other public comment on this item? So we're back to council for direction.
Can I ask Justin?
Yeah. We're back in council now.
So Justin, I'm wondering, you're posting everything on your YouTube channel, correct?
It is on my YouTube channel, the links are posted on most of the local Facebook groups.
Right, so could we take, do we, could we link to your YouTube channel on our website?
That is up, completely and totally up to you guys. My, my videos are posted up to be publicly accessible. Anyone can access them from anywhere, and anyone can link to them from anywhere they wish to link from. So if you guys want to put that on your website, I, I have no say as to where it can and can't go, because it is posted to a public video service.
Well, a single link would get, would get somebody to your channel, and then they'd go look for the meeting that they wanted from there.
Correct. So I can email you the direct link to my YouTube channel if you'd like.
Okay.
With, or.
Well, I think, I think just, just logistics. So it's possible that we could, tomorrow, for example, we could, we could put a link of, to your YouTube channel on the city website and say, you know, current, you know, meetings beginning X date are available here.
That is completely possible and completely up to your web design designer and whatever decisions you wish to make.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just curious, but are there others, like lots of things on your YouTube site that may or may not be city-related?
The only thing posted to that channel is, is Blue Lake related. So the only thing is Blue Lake meetings. I have a welcome to the, the channel thing, which was a video of, that I created with a little bit of music and a couple of pictures of like local things that happened. But, but everything else has been meeting-related on that specific channel.
Okay, um, direction for staff. It seems like things are moving forward with Access Humble, and that should continue. Any other direction for staff?
I'd like to go forward with putting Justin's channel, a link to Justin's channel on our agenda page. Until we can come up with something better and more permanent.
Uh, is that? Well, I guess we're just calling it item four, it seems like it's more like item seven.
I think it's four, I think it's actually four, because item seven is something that's going to happen over a long period of time, and this is strictly about, about the video and access to the videos.
What is the pleasure of the rest of the council?
If it's just city, that seems like it would be very simple. If it's anything to do, it's possible. If it's just the city, all the city meetings, I don't see why not.
I think you just want to be careful, and not that I think Justin has anything on his YouTube channel that wouldn't be relevant to the city or appropriate, but it's something outside of the city's control that you are then linking and also basically giving, you know, credence to or supporting or, so it's something outside of the city's control at that point, so I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, if there's a different way to do it, that would be preferable.
Yeah, but I think his way to do it is going to take quite a few months, it seems. So I think we can trust Justin, I think he's proven to this point that he is reliable and trustworthy, and he's only putting the meetings on the channel. And, you know, we can, we can state in the little link box that, you know, this, this is, this channel is provided by a credit system, you know, law and law, whatever, but I think that should be on there. I think we waited longer enough to get it on there, to get, you know, all of this accessible to the public. So I think we should do it now.
It does open the city to some sort of liability.
Yeah, I was just going to say, well, from a risk management perspective, though, what, what are the, what are the potentials? I mean, that's, I kind of live in a risk management world, and.
Right, right.
And all the worried about that. It's a little out of my league as far as that goes. I'm not sure if anybody else can get a hold of his thing and put anything in there that's weird. It may be something we should take up with our attorney.
I, I can offer an option. If you guys, so you can either do a link directly to my channel, which would give someone access to all videos. You could also do specific channel. So like you guys have a list of all your meetings and stuff. If under that specific meeting, you grab the link for that meeting and put the link to that meeting underneath that, that, then it would be, this is the meeting, this is the video of that meeting. And then you're not link, you're opening yourself up to the whole channel. It would only be for that specific video, for that specific meeting.
That would be good. It's more work for whoever's fielding on the website.
Yes.
To do it that way, but that would be, that would be good.
What is staff's feeling about this? Is this doable?
I think it's, I think it's doable. Like I said, my only, I think it needs to be worded appropriately. I just.
A disclaimer, more or less, that this is not.
Something completely outside of our control that is being promoted by the city, and that would be, that would be my concern.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about, too, that I don't, you know, disclaimers go hand in hand with lawsuits sometimes, so you never are completely safe with even a disclaimer. Is it something that would be appropriate to get clarification from, from the attorney or our risk management?
Yeah, I can run by, I, I mean, I think it's a pretty simple question and recommendation. I think you could answer that really quickly. So I would feel more comfortable having some, some opinion prior to, to doing, taking this action.
I agree.
So would it be, could a motion be made? And I'm not making it, I want to make sure it's appropriate to make first.
It just goes direction.
Yeah, we're really motioning out.
Yeah, we can.
We can make it over time, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. What I'm, what I'm wondering is if, you know, upon approval or green light from the attorney, then we can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'd also like to, to give a timeframe to that. So my suggestion would be to consult with the attorney and with his approval to make these links live by next Friday, a week from this Friday. My calendar, ten days or something, it is, is April 5th. May 5th.
May.
Sorry.
May 5th.
Cinco de Mayo.
Oh, that's right.
Do you think that's reasonable for staff?
Yeah.
That can be just direction, or if you want to make it in the form of a motion, that's up to you. Direction is okay. All right, so the direction is clear that pending discussion with the attorney and his approval, and he may wish to have a disclaimer on it or something, some legalese that we'll need to have there, that we can have the YouTube link, and all this could be done live the 5th of May. Okay, let's move on. Item five, Blue Lake Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule Discussion and Action. The Blue Lake Parks and Recreation Commission has provided a proposed rental and use fee schedule for park facilities and activities. The commission has reviewed neighboring jurisdictions for, for fee schedules and is recommending that the city council consider the schedule as provided. We do have the schedule in our packets. The fees are based upon facility impacts, staffing requirements, and operational needs, and recommended that we adopt the fee schedule as recommended by our park and recreation. Does a lot of this reflect the fact, Mandy, that we've had to pay our employees more because of the January 1st cost of revenue?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've had rising costs, and we've also had very, very minimal fees for our facilities. We've also put a lot of money and resources into upgrading our facilities as well. And we're also at a point where we have a lot of people that want to rent our facilities. So, you know, in looking at ways to balance revenues and impacts, but also making facilities accessible, that was a big consideration of the Parks and Recreation Commission. It was a big consideration of Emily's in looking at this to see where we can provide some, some equity across the board, you know, to balance those issues. So we think these fees are fair, they are lower than a lot of our neighboring facilities. I think Blue Lake is also in a unique position where a lot of our recreation facilities, you know, were donated by volunteers. They were built by volunteers, and so it's nice to make those as accessible as possible without just taking revenue as your defining factor.
Can we talk about this? Yeah, in looking at discussing this now.
There's the highlighted portions of this, these pages, and I was not sure if that meant something. The parts that are, that are grayed out versus the, what parts that are totally white and light.
I think it's changing the topic. It's going from one thing to a different thing to a different thing.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
But maybe not.
Um, the Nestler Car Show per vehicle, that is run on Annie and Mary Day, and that's money that goes directly to Parks and Rec. It's a fundraiser, more or less, and, and so, I mean, it really, yeah, it goes, goes along.
Well, part of the reason that recommendation was to make it as high as it is is because it includes two meals.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Where is this one on?
It's on the second page. It says under non-resident, oh, well, it's, it's got its own section. Nestler Car Show for the 30 dollars and now it's up to 15.
Yeah, that doesn't seem too bad.
Yeah.
Um, I had a couple, I really thought that the 10-time pass was a really great idea.
Where's that?
Um, it's at the first page, the drop-in pass to encourage people to come back. That's a brilliant, brilliant idea. And then I'm wondering about dropping down here to the parties for extra tables. It seemed a lot to jump at a whole 10 bucks, and I wondered if like 20 was a little more appropriate? Just, you know, just to throw in another table. Maybe instead of 25, it could be 20? Because the two-table minimum is up 10 bucks a table. I don't know, it just seemed high.
Is that for?
Uh, for parties.
I think Emily was factoring in some of the staff time to that, because there's a tremendous amount of cleanup that has to happen after these parties. And if you go from one table or two tables to three tables, it's, you know, it's might be another hour of staff time, you know, trying to scrape the foam off the carpet.
Well, it's 40 bucks for two tables minimum, and then it was 15 for an extra, but then it's 25, so it's actually more. You might as well, you know, I, I don't know, I didn't understand why it was more.
Or it's the same. Okay, I get what you're saying, so 20 bucks could be adding a table for 20 instead of the regular, which is 25.
Per table to add a third one.
So we have very few tables, and I think the idea was just then either, just to make a little bit more. Some of these items are like loss leaders. When we look, especially like our skate program, you know, it's $5 to get in the door, which is, you know, I mean, you can't do anything for $5 anymore, especially like send your kid to, for three hours of skating for $5. But our goal is to get people in the door and then see if we can sell, upsell our other items and concessions and different things. And so it's, it's somewhat similar with the parties, you know, you getting people in the door, but keeping it at a price point, like I said, that's, we really struggled with this, because we, our rentals, our rentals are still very affordable. You know, when you try and rent anything for like a kid's birthday anywhere, to rent a skating rink and have all the accessibility to everything that we offer over there, you know, our rates are still very, very affordable. We really wanted to kind of keep it that way, but we're still, you know, we're still not making a ton of money off of this. And so I think we have five tables. We have, yeah, we have very few tables to rent, so making that little extra. I mean, we could drop it down, $5 isn't going to kill us, but it, it is just, it is a bit of an upsell.
It used to be less for the, yeah, I didn't understand why it was only, yeah, I don't know. Anyway, that was just my suggestion.
But we'll make a little bit more off of their table. If you get two and then you want the third, it's going to be a little bit more expensive.
So it's $20 per table, so if you get a third, it's 20, or 25. And then if you get a fourth, it's 25 dollars for that table. So I wonder why, okay, so it's just the same price. Okay, any other questions from council before we open this up to the public? You know, we are, we are really popular, I know, and we're really getting booked, and it's very busy down there. Skate night, it's just so great to see all the families and young people being able to find a place to go to in Blue Lake. It's really, really looking wonderful down there. So I appreciate everything staff is doing to keep things going. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, people are coming from Eureka.
We were booked out to like May, May, you know, almost.
Surprised, and you run out of skates, certain sizes and all. That's what I'm concerned about, we need more skates, but then you can't have more people necessarily, so what to do about that? It's a hard problem to have, a good problem, I guess. Um, any other questions or comments from council before we open it up to the public? Any? Just a funny anecdote, I was, I shared this fee schedule with my dad for the car show. My dad has a car that he puts in car shows down in the Southern Valley, and he was blown away by how affordable the cost is. So I mean, even, you know, when you have a small car show, I mean, the Nestler Car Show is small comparatively, but he was, he was just very impressed that, you know, that it's, it's reasonable and accessible to, to everyone, not just the high-end, you know, car collectors. It was just, it was kind of sweet for him to say that.
Well, it's a growing car show, we had over 90 cars last year, so every year that Glenn and Emily put an amazing amount of time to, to make it successful. And it's become, where it started out just kind of like a little niche car show, now it's becoming much more popular, and, you know, we're getting entry, we're already getting entries and things, and people calling and coming from outside the area to participate. So it really is growing, and that's why we did have to kind of up that these two, because, you know, we do provide meals. Back in the day, when it was just a little bit smaller, you know, those costs were easily absorbed. You know, there's, you know, 25 cars, but you start getting to the 90s, and hopefully we're going to break 90 to 100 this year. You know, we had to raise those costs a bit.
Any other questions, concerns, comments from council? Okay, open it up to public, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Julie, have her hand up again. Julie, have her hand up again. Yeah.
Hi, I just, I know answering questioning, but this was very simple yesterday. Notice for clarification, are we limiting arena rentals to one day with this proposed fees and scheduling?
Arena. Does she have a non-horse arena?
One horse arena may be rented on weekends per rental.
What page is that on?
The last page.
Okay.
So, horse arena, only one day may be rented on weekends per rental. Fifty dollars a day, fifty dollars a half day for four hours, hundred dollars for a full day of eight hours. Deposit cleaning and damage is one hundred dollars.
That sounds, that sounds like you can't rent it for Saturday and Sunday, but only one or the other. Is that correct?
But Julie, are you asking if you could like rent it on a Tuesday and Wednesday back-to-back?
No, I'm just concerned because you guys already have a very awesome nonprofit organization that went and drove out all the sand for you as well. And their shows are planned to be two days. And I'm concerned about other venues that need setup time and takedown time. I run the Kinnleyville Arena and donated my entire life to Blue Lake Arena until the last couple of years helping Kinnleyville. And I just don't understand. I was able to come into the Parks and Rec and get some input. We really want to support our public arenas. We want to channel you guys, just public access. But also, we have a really bunch of great individuals that are very small and a mighty power. But I just, I just don't know why they'd be limiting rentals to one day. It's just kind of contradictory to a lot of the atmosphere that is within the horse world and doing events in clinics. And I just wondering how hard that will be enforced. And if it will be enforced, I think there should be an amendment to that.
So, we can clarify. And it probably just needs to be reworded a bit. We've had requests to rent the horse arena for non-horse-related events. And there's concern about taking the use away from the equestrian users for, like.
Mandy, I totally support that. And I think you guys should just do some kind of contingency that perhaps includes that. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
So, the, I think we just need to have some clarifying language in there. That those types of rentals will be evaluated to ensure that we, one of the big things is with public spaces, we have to maintain access. And so, it's very, you have to really evaluate a rental to make sure that it's being used appropriately and that it's not having too large of an impact on the public, because these are public spaces. And so, I think we can just reword that a little bit and say, and add that rentals for more than, rental requests for more than one day may be evaluated and facilitated based upon applicability of use or something. So, I think the intention.
Or a case by ca, on a case-by-case basis or something like that.
Right.
Because I think what you're alluding to is what happened last fall with the Renaissance. It's not Renaissance, the medieval festivals that we're talking about.
Right, yeah. So, those are larger events that, you know, do take the space away from the intended use. We've also had people request it for things completely outside of horse uses. And so, you know, just making sure that those are, are being evaluated appropriately. But we do have a lot of horse events that are two-day events and we are happy to facilitate those. You know, these, these rentals are for nonprofits to use. So, we work closely with all of those groups, you know, to maintain the facility, to do fundraising. So, so we're happy to provide some clarifying language to address that.
Yeah, I think there should be an asterisk or something there that says rentals may be assessed on a case-by-case basis or something to those words, to that effect. So, that we can cover, cover some of those circumstances that are beyond just this one line here. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, back to council for the vote. Did you want to change that to twenty-dollar fee, Elizabeth? We can make an amendment to this if you feel strongly about that on the table.
I do not feel that strongly about it.
Giving the fee.
That's our whole strategy. I'm giving this a chance.
I would that we approved the fees as presented.
Second. Wait, can I say something about? Further discussion?
Sorry.
With the, with the, with the modified language.
Oh, yeah.
With the horse arena. Can I add it in?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're amending the motion to say we approved the fee schedule with the amended horse rental. Language placed in there made by Alexia Fani, seconded by Ann Paul. Yes. Yeah, any further discussion? All of them favor say aye? Aye. If the council.
Emily, I have my hand up before. I just wanted to say quickly that if there's anything about, I could quite follow this, but if the Negro Festival was being discussed, I just wanted to say, I went on a website, it was a national website. And Blue Lake, Negro Negro Festival is on the national website and is one of not very many. So, I just want to say I support having it here. I thought it was great last year. So, anyway.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I know.
Okay. Item six, animal ordinance update discussion. Nuisance dog ordinance update. General information on this. The city manager was directed by the city council to contact Humboldt County Animal Control to discuss possible language changes to the city dog, city dog ordinances. Specifically, council is requesting information on changing the language regarding the public's ability to directly contact animal control to request a response in the event of a dog attack. Currently, Humboldt Animal Control contacts the city manager to authorize the response request. Because the city pays for each response separately, the language protects the city from incurring costs that may exceed the budget and intent of the ordinance. Humboldt County Animal Control has full authority to respond to any incident that poses an immediate risk to the public without prior approval by the city manager. In response to this directive, the manager, I think, believe has contacted Andra Hale, HCSO Animal Control Officer, to discuss options and ideas. Andra will be consulting with her division to discuss possible options and changes. In having the conversation, it was agreed that the current system can be approved without making major modifications to the ordinance. It was agreed that a tiered contact system could be put in place to ensure that requests for response would be managed efficiently and effectively. Staff will continue to explore options with the Humboldt County SO.
Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Sorry.
Animal Control Division. And will bring back information to council as appropriate. I have this thing about abbreviations. Okay, so that's the update on what's happening with our animal control issues. And we can discuss this. It's really not an action item, but we can discuss it further if there's anything to, if it's a matter of pleasure.
Is there other further clarifications? That's about all I have for this time. Yeah, Andra's, there's, there were some other issues recently in Trinidad with a dog attack. That was a different situation, but, so she's also looking at possible updates with Trinidad as well. So, she's just going to kind of roll this in for discussion. Hopefully, we can find a process that doesn't require rewriting the whole ordinance. And it seems like it's just this one component of, and it seems more just like a communication issue, honestly, so. Does she have a timeline on when she thinks the conversation will continue? She didn't, she was going to go back. She said she was going to have those conversations with her staff and then also her supervisor to see what some options might be.
So, is there an actual ordinance that stipulates how we interact with the county?
That's our nuisance dog ordinance.
And does that, does that address, I'm not familiar, I'm not recalling the language. Does that address how they're responding to us?
It does. It, it identifies them as the responding agency and the city, the process for making those requests.
Okay.
So, what we're talking about here is there may be a possibility where a citizen could contact the animal control department directly instead of going through the city. It happened to.
That was a question that council had asked us to look into, what those options were and if they were necessary or if there was something within the process or the communication structure that we could address. But I think there is a misconception that animal control only responds if the city manager allows them to. But there's a whole host of levels of response that they don't need a city manager authorization for. So, in the last instance, there was, I think there just needed to be some, maybe a tiered communication response in exchange of information. The city has several forms of communication available to us, including emergency after-hours, phone numbers. I have, you know, my cell number that I give out. And we also have a tiered system of response as far as staff who can make decisions in the event that I'm not available. So, I think there's some, some pretty easy clarifications that we can make within the system that already exists to meet the needs of the community.
Maybe it's an emergency. It should be a nine-one-one issue. I mean, absolutely. There's a dog attack, there's any kind of attack, it's a nine-one-one situation.
So, if they, and that's up to them to, it's just, it's like calling for anything else. If there's no threat, immediate threat, they triage their calls. And it's the same thing with animal control as well, so.
All right, thank you.
So, do you have any sort of idea how long it might take for this to get worked out to where it's going to be, it's going to change our system?
Well, I think immediately we're going to just update our communication structure. That's, that's easy. And that was something that Andra and I both agreed to. And I felt that that was probably something that just hadn't, because we've, I think, I've dealt with this twice in six years that I've been here. It's not a very frequent issue that we have. So, you know, those communication systems just haven't really been shared or updated for a number of years. She's had turnover in staff. Like I said, it's not something that I regularly deal with. So, those are things that she's going to do. And her system too is make sure that her staff has my contact information and has that and, you know, understands kind of the, the tiered system of communication that we have in the city. So, I think that's the quickest and easiest immediate response.
So, is that an actual change in the way we're doing things or not? Or it's just a making sure everybody understands process?
It's not a change necessarily. It's just making sure that there's a communication structure in place that everyone understands. So, if there's a call made, they can't get ahold of me. They know who, they can call second. If it's an after-hours issue, they know that there's an after-hours number that can be called. Except this is only in the event that it's a non-threatening situation. If there's any threat to life or property, they will respond without me being involved. That's their decision. So, this is a very, you know, if it's, it could be, you know, a stray dog walking down the street or someone wants to take. We've had people request animal control to come out and pick up dogs to take them to the shelter. Well, that costs us a substantial amount of money. So, those are calls that come in and we just, you know, usually we can figure out which dog it is or we ask the reporting party to take to the shelter themselves so that the city isn't on the hook for several hundred dollars for that. So, we very, you know, we, I think, like I said, I think twice in six years, we've had some issue where animal control had come out for, we have once, we had a small dog that bit, actually bit our water meter reader, who was a city staff member. And then, we had the recent, the recent issue.
So, I'm a little unclear. It sounds like nothing's really changing with this. But I was thinking that when this whole conversation started, we were looking to, to change, to kind of cover that maybe in between, like somewhere between active threat, you know, somebody's cornered by a vicious dog versus somebody has, you know, been bitten, that the threat is, is not current. You know, you know, we want to get animal control that quickly, you know, to take a report and, and to, and to deal with the injuries and whatnot that have happened. It may not be an active.
If there's injuries to a person, they're going to come out anyways.
And what about injuries to another person's dog?
And they're going to have to make that decision on how they would handle that response. That's animal controls per view of how they triage their calls.
Right, well, my understanding from my conversation with Andra is that, that they weren't able to, with the current structure, they weren't able to make that call in that last situation that brought all this to the forefront.
So, I think at that point though, there's not an immediate threat.
Right.
And so, there's not an immediate response necessarily that's going to happen. So, calling the city and touching base over the issue isn't necessarily preventing anything from happening. Like, so they have like three animal control officers for the whole county. So, there's not like a, necessarily a lapse that's, that's taking place that's going to be, and Andra agreed too, that those, in those events, they're going to have to make a decision when they would send someone else to respond. So, I mean, if, if the will of the council, you directed me to come back with some language to talk with Andra and HCSO about this. And that's what we're doing in the gap time. We're improving our communication structure. Andra's looking to see if this is something that they want to pursue, taking that on directly themselves. I don't know that they will want to do that as well. So, she's, it's, the ball is in her court at this point.
Well, there's a kind of a catch-22 because even in the Trinidad situation where Ted Peace lost part of his finger, they couldn't pursue it because the dog was going after another dog and he intervened. So, it wasn't actually an attack on a human. It was actually an attack on another dog. I read the whole article with interest because I thought of our situation too. That there's a real catch when it's a dog against a dog versus a dog against a human.
Well, I think that comes down, what that issue was, was whether they could declare the dog a vicious dog.
Right.
And there's a process for doing that.
Right.
They immediately responded because there was an ongoing attack. The dog was attacking a person. So, they're going to respond immediately. That's a threat to life and, you know, so, but the secondary part of that is the declaration and process for declaring a dog a vicious dog or a nuisance dog. And there's a whole process outlined for that.
My only concern, I mean, I think what we're doing is good work and, and it's going to improve the situation. But I, I'm afraid that we're still, we still haven't addressed that middle ground that, that brought this, this concern to the council. And, and I'd definitely like to see that, you know, better defined. And, you know, when Andra and I talked, we talked about like a certain kind of algorithm where, you know, we could kind of, we could allow the counties to, to respond with a slightly lower threshold than, you know, threat to life or limb kind of thing. So, in, in the case where we had a significant attack where an animal had to be treated, you know, animal control could come out without first getting authorized to make a report. And, you know, there was, there was a significant financial loss in that situation. So, like any of us, you know, if something happens, something hit, run in our car or somebody breaks into our house and it's going to cost us, we want, we want law enforcement to be able to come out and make a report and make us feel safe and make sure, you know, make us feel like we have what we need to move forward with the lawsuit or, you know, trying to get, you know, compensation for the damages or whatever. So, I'm, I'm still looking to, to see that that little, in the middle piece gets addressed.
So, perhaps this one sentence, Humboldt County Animal Control has full authority to respond to any incident that poses an immediate risk to the public without prior approval by the city manager, isn't that?
That's true.
Yeah.
So, that would cover it, I would think.
Right. Yeah.
Well, the harm has already taken place is what I'm talking about. The harm has already taken place.
There's nothing we can do about that.
And, and somebody's needing support to, to, to document the situation and, and be able to move forward with it.
Is this, is this new language, the, the language that Elizabeth just read? Or is that, that's been in the ordinance? Well, it sounds like you are already in communication with the department. And it sounds like they are looking at some of their tier responses as well. So, you know, we can move forward on, we can direct staff to further. we can direct staff to further look into having a little more, I don't know, a little more bite in the, I hate to use that word. A little more teeth, that wouldn't be good either. But a lay, a level between, you know, the tiers that she's talking about, having some kind of level of discussion where, where we can be covered with the attack of one dog after another dog. And I know that's a problem because it's happening when, you know, there's.
So I guess I'm confused. If, if somebody's attacking your dog and you call animal control and you say, there's somebody, you know, my dog is being attacked right now.
They'll respond.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's in a triage model, right?
If it's happening right then?
If it's happening right then, they will respond. They might send a deputy out too if there's no animal control officers around. This instance is a non-threatening situation where animal control, where the city would bear the expense of a response. And so animal control calls us to determine whether the city wants to bear the cost or feels that it's necessary.
Right, like there's a dog walking right there and it doesn't have a call.
And people call animal control to respond and they say, no, the city has to authorize that first because, you know, like I said, it costs us between, you know, a couple hundred to $300 each time they come and respond and follow up and, and do their reports or if they have to take a dog to the shelter. So that's why that system was put in place. If there's a, there's a threat, they will respond. That's, that's within their purview without city interference.
Which is what this language, sorry, bring it back to Elizabeth's.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it says right there.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion from council, I'll run it up to the public on this item. Is there anyone that would like to talk about this matter?
Yeah, I just had a quick question.
Oh, okay, I have a hand here and then I'll.
Um, so I wish I had a pen and paper. I would have taken notes. On March 26th, the dog that attacked my dog was roaming again. And it was said that because he hasn't attacked a human, he's not a threat. But he attacked my dog already. So obviously he is a threat. If the city is not having Otis get picked up and people are calling about him, that is a really turning a blind eye and a risk, I think. He's a liability because he has attacked my, my dog already. So I think that the city needs to take Otis seriously and not just think that he's just like this nice roaming dog. It shouldn't be acceptable for him to be roaming and be free after he mauled my dog and almost killed him. That really upsets me that there's, you know, no consequence and that he's allowed to still roam. That was March 26th, so a few weeks ago. I know Elizabeth McKay saw him roaming the.
And I can't, I would, I don't know for sure that that was.
The levee, okay. Well, we've had other people suspect that they've seen him enough to where I'm sure he is still around. And I just wanna know if the city doesn't, or if the sheriffs aren't deeming him to be a risk or whatever.
Vicious dog.
The vicious dog, can, can the city of Blue Lake support me in declaring him vicious? Because he has attacked my animal. Can I get support in having him, you know, with the sheriff specifically in this situation with Otis, please? Because it makes me feel terrified to know that he's roaming. When I found that out, I immediately, you know, checked my, my, my yard and made sure my kids were inside because I, in my opinion, he's already came to my house and had blood and I don't want him to come back for more. So I'm very afraid of Otis. And I know you guys don't seem to see him as a risk, but it was very, very frightening to walk outside and see my animal with somebody's fingers laying, you know, that covered with blood in my backyard. Very traumatic, so. I know it's not a person, but it was just an animal. It does matter. And if it happens to you, you're gonna care a lot. I just want the city to support me with Otis, please.
Thank you. Is there, is there any way that the city can help in determining if a dog is vicious?
So your ordinance lays out a process for making that determination?
Yeah.
And a, a large part of that lies with animal control. They take their reports, they do the interviews and they make the, look at the evidence to, to make that determination.
Because it used to be something like three strikes and you're out or something.
Yeah, and I think, you know, there's, there's different considerations that they make. The, and I can't speak for animal control. It's not something I have any expertise in. And that's why they, you know, it's, that's why it's put into, you know, into their lane because that's what they're trained, I believe, to be able to make those evaluative determinations.
Are they still under the three strikes, you're out type deal with dog attacks? Like it has to be three bites or something?
I think that.
But it has to be three, it has to be three bites to a human too.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely, there's definitely a, a system of evaluation before some, you know, because there's instances where dogs, you know, they get in dog bites. But does that mean that, that every dog that gets a dog bite is a vicious dog? That, I mean, being a vicious dog has, I think, a specific, almost legal definition and threshold.
And the ordinance that we follow is the county ordinance?
It's the city's ordinance.
But it's.
It's a downed drum.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you saying that based on the report that would not have aid to the county, that it's up to them to either declare that dog a vicious dog or not?
They go through the process of doing that.
That's why I'm asking about that.
So have, has the city had any feedback from the county on that particular instance?
All I was told was that they did not have, that it did not meet the threshold of what they would require to, to make that determination.
You mean they didn't have enough information?
I don't, I don't know.
Or the event didn't make enough?
You'd have to talk to Andra about what their determination was and what the evidence that they had and how they made that determination.
And have you gotten a report about that stuff?
I have not myself, no.
I've submitted my request.
So you, but I do have a copy of that report?
But just from what I submitted and what I know, there's no, it's, it's insane to say that he's not violent when he did what he did. I mean, I feel that if he attacks somebody else in the city, it's a lawsuit for the city if you're gonna turn a blind eye to a dog that's already not at risk.
Is there any other comment? Oh, yes.
Oh, I just, my question was just, is there a place to look up ordinance? I, where would I look up the ordinance for Blue Lake ordinances, dog ordinances?
It's on our website, under municipal code.
Any, any, any city ordinance I can find online?
There's a lot of, I think most of them are there. I, I can't say that for sure because I haven't read them all or looked for every single one. But, but there's a, yeah, I could, after the meeting, I could say you can find it.
Okay.
What is that, Amanda?
Oh, yes, Lynn.
Ellie, I'm looking at Title VI animals. And then there are three ordinances under Title VI. And I don't know which one you're talking about tonight. There's dog licensing regulations, which have about dogs' behavior. And then there's vicious, potentially dangerous, and probably nuisance dogs. And I don't know which, which ordinance that staff is referring to. But I believe that animal control and the sheriff are enforcing Blue Lake's ordinance because they're in Blue Lake city limits, not the county ordinance. And I think the council has the ability to change any ordinance. And there is a lot of public concern. I mean, I think every week we see a new incident or that Mendocino thing that happened last week. And there's a lot of conversation, I think, right now about these issues. So it might be worth a discussion or a review of your ordinance. And I know in this ordinance, I noticed one attack on a human. We perhaps have a dog be declared vicious, but, but took two attacks and, and there was no attack on dogs mentioned. They were, it was attacked on animals. And I think it was written to protect sheep and cattle and that kind of thing, which are important. But you might want to consider updating the ordinance for some of the things that have been going on. I know the situation down in Mendocino was a trained dog, a trained, trained recaptive. And that goes along, I think some of us know, with some of the drug activity that happens in our county and this, this is, you know, this goes on. So it might be worth Public Safety Commission just reviewing Blue Lake's ordinances just to see if there's some changes that you might wanna make that would make it easier for animal control to do their job and easier for people to understand. I think there's a lot of public misunderstanding, you know, about, I, I know for years there's always people saying, we have a leash law in Blue Lake. And then somebody else says, no, we don't have a leash law in Blue Lake. There's, there's a lot of confusion. So it might be worth a review. Have Public Safety Commission that could do something like that. And I know the council, one of your primary jobs here is to keep, is to have a safe community as soon as you can. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Yes. Yep, it's Julie. Julie? Give it your hand out, Julie.
Oh, it's pretty, oh, was it my turn or someone else?
It's yours.
Okay, I get confused, you guys, sometimes. I'm sorry. So I just wanna go back to my suggestion earlier for getting some signage on all the city, uh, city property. Really get your, your signage very clear. Do you have a leash law, state it. In case of emergency, call 911. But you guys are opening yourself up to a lot of liability with not having signage that's appropriate for that, I would, I would speculate. So, and just community outreach that they are having a situation to reach out to 911 too would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, and then Matt. What's the possibility of creating a leash law? I've been thinking about that long and hard. But we will discuss possibly the Public Safety Commission looking at our, our dog ordinances. That would be appropriate for them, I think. And make some recommendations to us. I think that would be a good way to go. But I've been thinking about that a lot myself.
I, I think it's needed. We have, we have wandering dogs around.
Yeah, well, you know, years ago we used to say, under the, under the control of their owner. But, you know, one person's idea of that dog being under control and another person's idea are vastly different.
And the dog's idea.
And exactly.
Exactly.
I have, I have a little white dog and he spends, he, he would go after a dog and he's just a pain. So I keep him on a leash and he's just a small dog. But he starts the fight.
Matt?
Matt Box. Yeah, I just wanna go on record agreeing with Winona. And I think you already made my point that California leash laws are very loose and left up to the towns. But in general, off-leash is not just let your dog roam free. That's a whole different thing. Letting your dog off-leash on the trail is fine. Most of our dogs are wonderful. I pet all the dogs. I really enjoy all of our dogs here. It's wonderful. But you just let them out and you don't know where they are, what they're doing, especially if they have attacked somebody. That's a different thing. That's not off-leash. That's free roaming, which is, you could do an ordinance on not letting your dog just go sleep two miles away like a wild animal, you know. So that's just my, my comment.
Thank you.
Just, I wanna agree with that too, with the leash law. I think that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I would agree with that too. Mainly because I always have my dog on a leash and, and when I see a dog with, not on a leash coming towards me, I panic because my dog's gonna go after her or whatever. You know, enough that I, it's like, I feel very vulnerable in that situation.
Thank you.
I'm gonna agree with Winona. And also I wanna say, I would like to see a leash law also. The last two days, I've walked my dogs down to the river and on a leash. And there, the first day, so yesterday, the gal ahead of me had three dogs. I have one dog, mine's on a leash. She has three dogs, not on leashes. One of her dogs came over to my leashed dog and my dog, like, you know, was gonna bite it because it's in its space. So I agree, we need a leash law and that would really help with the Otis thing. Like, because then, right, if any dog is out without a leash, then we could make a phone call and it could be taken care of. I think that would curb a lot of the roaming dogs that we see out there. I, I wanted to say, it wasn't like Winona's dog was out in the road roaming around. Winona's dog was in its own yard when it was viciously attacked and brought near death. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
So aside from the leash law, it seems like we need to have some mechanism for starting a warning process. You know, even if it's not, you know, Winomeka County's definition of a vicious dog. You know, it doesn't seem reasonable to me that we have a situation like this and then no action is taken or, or no warnings are made to the owner of that dog. So, you know, I don't know how that would look or if it's something we need, we do in a step process with the Safety Commission. But it seems like we have to, we should really have something like that, you know? So at the very least, you know, the first instance is, 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 you know, puts that animal on probation, puts that owner on probation. And if there's another one, then, then the animal's removed or whatever.
Some tiers then in the process. Some tiers then, in the process.
Yeah, I mean, at the, at the, at the very least. I mean, and again, like in this case where it costs so much money to bring that animal, you know, to the vet and everything. The owner, you know, maybe there's an ordinance that could say, hey, if your dog, if your dog, uh, you know, causes damage to another animal and if that results, results in vet bills, you're liable. Um, you know, I don't know how that works. I mean, I guess that's just a, a matter for, for civil court in a lot of cases, but maybe if there's an ordinance to back that up, it could, um, it could make it a little stronger.
So, um, I think the idea of bringing this to the Public Safety Commission meeting might be a good one because, um, they can really look at that ordinance fully. We can recommend that they look particularly at, um, our lack of leash law, I could call it. Um, and then maybe something along the lines of a warning or some tiers on, on how, um, dogs should be, treated in a town, I guess. Um, Mandy, when is the next Public Safety Commission meeting?
Uh, they meet the first Monday of the month.
So that's Monday.
Monday.
So Monday.
May first.
Probably too late. Well, maybe it's not too late.
I have other suggestions.
Okay. Would you be willing to put that on the agenda?
Maybe? Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, I think that's a good step. And that's happening frequently for the close, close, May 1st is the, uh, meeting for the Public Safety Commission. Um, yeah, that's good. Uh, okay, we're on item seven. And item seven is our City of Blue Lake Website Ad Hoc Committee update. Um, the City Council has established an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc is a Latin term that means for this, which means it's specifically set for an item, it's not, um, and it's an as needed committee too, it's not usually a long, long-term thing. To review the city's website and bring back ideas and options for updating the site and the site content. Content, the ad hoc includes Mayor Jones and Councilmember Stefani, also an ad hoc, um, commission cannot, um, have more than two council persons or it would be a crime for council. So we did have, um, two meetings. The first meeting was just Elise and I meeting, um, to talk about some ideas and we had my, um, laptop in front of us and we looked at all the, um, various aspects of the website. Um, and we made some notes about some of the things, um, we've noted, like, uh, the homepage, um, picture, um, and some other, um, the jobs and volunteer opportunities, consolidating parks and rec. And, um, then we met again last Saturday with, um, Elise and I and a group of concerned citizens at the Grange. Um, and we brought up some ideas there too and, um, talked to them about, um, the website. We didn't have real good, um, internet connection there, we were all using our phones to look at things. We noticed that some things have been changed on the website, which looks good. Um, we now have the calendar, which we like, that shows all of the commission dates on it. And it's two months ahead, is I think what we saw, April and May. Is there June on there too? I don't remember, yeah, so April and May. And, um, so, from those meetings, um, we talked about contracting with a webmaster, um, to possibly get some more work done on our website. And our ad hoc meeting on April 22nd. Um, we talked about linking with businesses. We talked about having the calendar mentioned, not just city business, but possibly other events that occur in the city and how that would be possible. So, uh,
So we had, we had nine folks from the community join us at our meeting on Saturday, the 22nd, which was really great. We had a lot of great ideas, um, coming from different directions and different concerns. And so that was really refreshing. Um, and we talked about all aspects of design, a lot of different aspects of design, and we talked about, um, really trying to simplify navigation on the website, um, making lots of different updates and improvements in terms, in terms of, uh, user-friendlyness, um, information availability, cur, you know, making different things to make the information more current. Um, one of our main goals for doing this whole thing is to, um, to make it, the website more user-friendly, um, have more information, um, that is current on there, make it easier for staff to update it. Um, go through and remove all the redundancies so that when staff goes in to update something, they only have to update it one time and not find three or four different places on the website where it needs to be changed. Um, so we have a ton of stuff. We talked, we talked about, um, having a bill pay option for water bills that, um, is a little more advanced than what our current, um, bill pay option is, that doesn't actually cost any money if you use an e-check or something like that. Um, possibility of signing up for a service, you know, like a notifying kind of a service where when a certain something happens, it triggers an automatic email to go to you, or, you know, you know, you might find out, oh, there's something new on the civic calendar. Um, you know, just a little blurb so that you go there and find out what the new posting is, um, that sort of thing. Um, so what we came to at the end of that meeting was that, well, to figure out what we can and can't do, we need to have a meeting with our web designer. And I believe we were all in agreement that we would, um, stay with the person that is currently hosting our, um, our webpage. Um, you know, and work with Andy, um, to move forward on this. And so that's where we're at, we all, um, the group of 12 people were, were pretty much in agreement that we should have a, have a meeting with the designer and, and learn about what we, what was possible and then, and then to start to build, uh, from there.
Yeah, we were thinking that it could happen here at Skinner Store because there's better internet here than at the Grange and, um, that it may happen like in an afternoon or something like that to copy people that work and that kind of thing. So, I think that would be our next, yeah. Um, if there's any questions about it, you can, yeah, you can proceed onward. Anything from the public on this item? All right, we're on, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just late to the meeting. I was just late to the meeting and I just thought it was really cool to see it come together and I thought, uh, it was really, just seeing the process actually from in here, we talked about created and then following through, I felt like it was, it was just everyone working together.
Yeah, and ad hoc committee meetings are a little more free-flowing than what we have here and that's just how they can be. Becky, Lisa, and Jean. Uh, there was a question about the cost. Um, wasn't there that you were going to ask the council about, um, his work?
Well, we talked about, there's two, there's two cost, um, pieces on, on this. The first one is, um, the proposal to do the website refresh, which was $1,260, which, um, covers 14 hours of Andy's time. Um, and what he did mention to me when we talked about how the interface with the, with the city would go, um, is that if there were lots and lots of meetings, um, you know, that, you know, went beyond his, his hourly, you know, his, uh, proposal, that his, that rate might go up a bit. So it's possible that we, we might use up a little bit more money, um, having this initial meeting with him. Um, and because there's such a, a fairly sizable group of us, um, you know, we're probably going to take a little more time, um, doing that than, um, than if there was just one or two people. So, um, we did also talk about kind of, kind of narrowing down, you know, um, the group, um, you know, to make that a little more, um, logistically easy. But, um, so, so yeah, there, I guess there is a question to the council, I mean, is it okay to, to, you know, to use possibly a couple more hours? And then the other, the other possibility that we talked about at the last meeting too was to contract with Andy for, um, monthly rate, a monthly, uh, number of hours. And, um, my, my recommendation was to contract with him for the, for his four-hour, um, monthly, uh, contract, which, uh, qualifies us for 50 cent, a 50% reduction in his fee. So we're paying him $45 an hour for four hours a month. That way, if, um, if we don't quite finish our project in his initial proposal, we have, we have lots more, you know, six more opportunities, say if we, if we contract with him for six months at that rate, um, then we would have six more monthly opportunities to dial things in and, and get stuff, uh, completely figured out. And also, in situations where there's something that needs to happen or there's a payback date, rather than have staff do it, he could do it. Um, you know, if he, if we had those, those monthly hours available. So, um, so that $45 an hour, you know, we all, you know, we at the, at the meeting agreed that that was pretty darn reasonable for somebody, um, with his expertise, um, and we would like to recommend that, that the city would agree with that.
Becky?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for having that meeting, um, and, because it was very productive and went well, thank you.
And, Lisa, did you also have your hand up?
I can't remember.
I just wanted to, to just also thank you and appreciate because Becky gave some very great examples of organization and layout and web design, which were very, you know, anyway, so, but thank you all, y'all for having been there. Adeline and, you know, Lisa, you're much helpful.
Welcome.
Okay, back to council for any direction or discussion. So it does sound what we want to do next, um, just to let staff know is that we will be wanting to meet with our web designer here at Skinner Store so that we can maybe use some of the technology that's here to kind of look at it. Um, and that way we would be able to have a better idea of what, what changes we want made. And we have noted that there are some really nice changes that have occurred on the website. So thank you for the work you're doing, staff, on updating things. Calendar was really nice.
Yes, yes, too. I meant to say that too.
So, does the council amend, do we need to decide and, and make a motion and do all that to go ahead with the proposal? To accept Andy's proposal and move forward on that? I guess if we're going to spend money talking to him, we need to make a decision.
Right, and I was going to ask you, Mandy, is, is this enough of a, a change, um, in our budget that we would have to do a budget amendment for this?
I don't think so, I think for, you know, a few hours of this time, I think once you talk with Andy and see what it is you want to do, um, I think, I, I don't, I mean, it's up to council, but, I mean, from staff's standpoint, I can't imagine him spending four hours a month on our website. Once it's, you know, cleaned up, there's just not that much that should be changing on the website. The format should stay the same, it should just be, um, information updates, but there's not really that many moving, there shouldn't be that many moving parts on a city website. Um, so, but you guys will discuss that with Andy and see, maybe you front-load, um, the initial review and update and lessen the monthly costs, um, would be my recommendation, so.
Makes sense. So then, should we make a motion to accept his initial proposal for the refresh? And then, that's how?
You discussed with him the idea of meeting with a big group of people? I'm just curious.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I want to throw that out.
And so the refresh is the $1,460?
The $1,260.
Twelve.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, and if the big, and if, and if the meetings go too long, he budgeted six hours for the front, the front end of the, um, looking at the website, you know, the shoulders and that. And then eight hours for, um, for the actual design and the work. So if we burn up too many of his hours in the front end, there will be a catch on time and then we build it back in there.
Almost four hours a month, 25?
Yes. If we contract with him.
I think that's a fair amount. We'd get them with that $1,260 first.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, yeah, yeah.
You should probably have the whole thing updated with that, that would be a problem.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of rabbit holes on our website. There's quite a lot of rabbit holes on the website. So, and then we also talked about, um, maybe hiring a photographer that does drone photography to get a new current picture of, um, area of the town for the, I mean, I can't.
Well, yours is there now and yours, and mine's been there forever, and then we need one from you, which I think everybody's posing in front of that, it appears.
Uh, it's in the other room, but yes.
Oh, or the other one, yeah.
Gorgeous.
Okay.
Good one.
And Chris isn't here, can't do that too. Um, so do we need a motion to expend this money, um, or to contract with Andy, or is this?
Um, it would probably be cleaner, just because it wasn't pre-identified in the budget. I mean, we have, we have money in the administration's side to maintain the website, but just to, I think, just to keep it clean so that you guys know what your parameters are and, um, what that budget amount is, I think that would be, that would be best.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we accept Andy's proposal for $1,260 to do a 14-hour project to refresh our website. I will second that.
Motion made by Elise Stefani, second by Angela Scholl, um, to contract with Andy for the $1,260 refresh. Um, further discussion. That's all, all of your fingers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes. Okay, we are now on item eight, commercial property vacancy tax discussion. And the City Council has a Blue Lake Economic Development Commission, and they have discussed options to reduce vacancies on commercially zoned properties in the city. This has been an ongoing discussion and Councilmember McKay has requested that the item be brought before the City Council for further discussion and review. As cities around the country grapple with economic impacts on various levels, there's a marked trend in incentivizing development and investment in commercial spaces through the use of a vacancy tax. The most recent example occurred in San Francisco, but the trend is increasing across the country. And we have some examples of vacancy tax, uh, taxes in our packet. Um, the vacant commercial spaces impact the city on various levels, they reduce tax revenue, impacting properties, and inhibit economic investment.
Question, um, were properties identified that might be subject to this tax and if so, come on back?
Um, I have, no, not all of them. I know there's various ones that are down there that I'm aware of, like the Emporium that's empty and Stardos, I'm not sure what's going on with that. Um, and then there's that other, uh, building next to the city's new, uh, town square.
The old building company.
Yep, um, and I don't, I am not aware of all of them, I don't have a list. I have that, uh, Jones Building, which I'm not sure what's going on with that.
Jones Shirley's Building, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the last one.
Those are the four that I have noticed. I believe it's pending for sale and that's all, that's 100% residential.
No, it's commercial, it's the bottom.
Is it?
It's only residential with a use permit, which that use permit does not, um, transfer with new owners.
They would have to come to the planning commission for it.
And it only, it only is the lower level and is there more than one unit on the lower level?
I think there's only one.
Well, there's a back unit.
Yeah, but I don't know that that's the separate, I think. Yeah, I mean, I'm not really sure if they, if they, um, divided that at some point, they probably did if that was.
Yeah, I'm not sure. You could have a, you could have a shop in the front and then you could have a residence in the back on, on the first level.
All right.
Um, but anyway, uh,
Jones Shirley's, the yellow one across the street from the RT, that's empty right now. Next door to, let's see.
The Wildlife Institute.
The spa.
Wildlife Institute.
And the old Jamayo Spa.
Yeah.
The old Red Rattish. It was Red Rattish for it.
Well, in between that.
No, it was a Red Rattish.
That, the Red Rattish is occupied at this point.
Oh, that's where the wildlife, that's where the wildlife, that's right.
Yeah, that one's occupied. You know, the coffee shop is, uh, occupied, of course, and then there's that other store is occupied. Yeah, there's just a few unoccupied buildings, you know, that should be occupied. It kind of looks sort of ghost townish and, but.
So when something, um, that's potentially retail is occupied by an office, that just qualifies as occupied? So it doesn't really matter what's in there, just that there's something in there?
It's commercial.
Well, that's retail. That would be considered retail, I think.
Well, there's some.
Commercial, commercial.
Yeah, it's commercial.
Commercial.
You're right, it's not retail.
It's a business though.
Yeah.
It's not a residence. Yeah.
Um, so, these taxes, they would be incurred to the property owner, is that my understanding on these?
So I think cities are, um, looking at different, different methods to incentivize investment and, um, so I think people, cities are looking at a host of different options. Some cities are looking at vacancy taxes, some, uh, cities are looking at ways to incentivize, it could be a grant program, it could be revitalization, um, lots of cities have used their COVID dollars to try, um, they've looked at, a lot of cities have rezoned properties. Um, there's a big trend right now with malls, um, you know, malls are, have been on the decline for 30-plus years. I don't think there's been a new mall built in like, what'd they say, 20 years? Um, it's just not really how people choose, um, to shop anymore. People are going back to downtowns and having those different types of, um, shopping experiences and, and eating experiences. So there's, there's a real kind of like historical, um, step back to, to the way people traditionally shopped in their communities. Um, so, looking at, lots of malls are being rezoned for healthcare, um, they, you know, they have infrastructure, they have parking, um, so they're looking at those for healthcare, they're transitioning some, a lot of malls over to housing, um, different mixed-use developments. So there's a whole host of options, um, and I think what the EDC has been grappling with is trying to figure out what is an option to try and increase, um, the retail presence in our downtown. And this is one item that, um, is, you know, it's an option, I don't know if it's a, if it's a, the best fit for Blue Lake, but it's something to start that conversation, um, like I said, there's, there's a whole host of opportunities and ways to incentivize, um, retail investment.
Yeah, I just went to Reading and they have, uh, do you remember the Reading Mall at all?
Yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah.
It's, it's, roof is gone and you can, it was amazing.
Yeah.
They've completely revitalized it.
Right.
So is there funding, like how did they get the money to do that? And who owns, the, the problem is like, are they owned by individuals or is it, or is it city owned, you know?
It depends, I mean, a lot of like, the bigger properties are owned by investment corporations. A lot of malls and bigger properties like that are owned by, um, just out-of-the-area investors. And so there's not a real, uh, incentive to invest. Uh, they can write them off for taxes, they can write off the losses, um, you know, you've, we've seen that with the mall in Borica, you know, where they, there's a host of empty stores, but the rents are so high and there's just no real incentive to, um, because they're not huge moneymakers at that point and the maintenance and upkeep is really, um, you know, expensive. So, bigger landowners can sit on properties and it doesn't impact their, you know, their, basically their daily lives to, you know, they can sit on these properties, pay minimal amounts of taxes, um, but it's the communities that, that don't get the benefit of, you know, having that investment.
So then, what I, what I've read, um, what I read is that if, if there is a vacancy tax, the tax, that vacancy tax goes to the city, let's say, and the city uses those tax revenues to incentivize, um, whatever the town is looking for, boutique shops or restaurants or blah, 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 whatever. But to incentivize then those buildings to be utilized.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any, it doesn't make any sense to tax someone and then, you know, put them in a further economic decline. I mean, the, I think the idea is that at some point you start to become, you know, a partner and you can collect the tax but reinvest it back into the property, um, or even use it to match or, you know, um, there's different funding sources that sometimes come along, I mean, we don't have redevelopment agencies anymore. Um, those used to be great options to help, especially in small communities, to, um, incentivize that type of investment. We don't have those anymore, but there are different mechanisms, I mean, sometimes you can, um, you know, pull in resources for, um, infrastructure. I mean, sometimes you can, um, you know, pull in resources for, um, infrastructure improvements. You know, maybe the city can put in nicer sidewalks or lighting or, um, you know, help. Maybe there's opportunities to assist with, um, maybe some cohesive marketing or branding or things. So cities can't necessarily make that investment as a business partner, but we can create more of a foundation that makes it a healthier retail or commercial climate.
So you were at the Economic Development Commission. What, what was the, what was the consensus of the commission as to how to incentivize people to? To, I mean, was this, was this, because this looks like something that works for larger cities. I'm just concerned about the size of Blue Lake starting to give into something like this.
Yeah.
I just don't want to be punitive to these folks that are trying to make their mortgage as it is.
Right. Um, I do not have a direct answer to that question.
From what I saw in re, in researching it, it's something that cities on every kind of size and scope and scale are looking at.
Well, it seems to me that before we would, um, consider any sort of a tax, which is absolutely punitive, um, we would, um, you know, if the city has the resources at the time, then the city should be reaching out to its property owners, having a discussion and seeing what they're looking for, what their barriers are to having a, an active, um, you know, business in that space, and, and go from there. This, this to me, you know, regardless of its, you know, intention to be, um, you know, inspiration in some way is, seems very punitive. And, and given our town and the number of properties that might be affected by this, which are rather small, it's, it seems to me like it's really targeting just a very few individuals, which, which doesn't feel right at all to me.
Um, before I open up to public comment, is there anyone that would like to make another comment about this on the council?
I'd like to kind of clarify the, the discussions from the EDC.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think one of the considerations too is the, um, the size and scope of our downtown. Um, you know, we have a very small historical downtown, um, and we have a lot of vacant buildings um, in, in comparison to the size of our downtown. So it's a pretty high percentage of vacant properties square footage-wise, um, in relationship to the size of it. And I think that's been one of the concerns is, and I don't know that a tax is necessarily the right option, um, but I definitely think that the city has to be proactive in trying to figure out ways to incentivize investment into the downtown, because it's a struggle for the other properties that are out there. Um, it's a struggle for the city in not being able to have sales tax revenue. Um, and when you have large amounts of square footage that aren't inactive in your downtown, it does tend to create kind of a climate and a look that isn't necessarily conducive to investment by others. Um, and so it's a, it's a problem that we've been looking at for a number of years. It's a problem that gets brought up to us by other property owners in the downtown as well. Um, because in small downtowns, everyone needs each other. You know, they need to create that climate of, of energy and vibrancy, and it's very hard to do that when there's large gaps in that footprint. Um, so I think, you know, it's, it's definitely an area of concern for the city. Um, and something that needs to continue to be looked at, whether this is the best option. Um, but I think the discussion is appropriate.
Yeah, I agree, and I understand why it's coming before us. I understand why the Economic Development Commission is concerned about it as well. I know staff has reached out to the owners of many of the properties in town and brought them in and talked about options, and it seems exciting, and then suddenly it goes in a different direction or nothing happens from it. So it's kind of discouraging in a way. Um, and it's not any fault of anyone's, you know, it's just a hard climate right now to get into retail. And, uh, I don't have an answer for what we can do. I mean, I'd like to see buildings, um, you know, painted and, and looking a little nicer. That I think would help, but I, you know, I don't know how the city can work, um, on getting some loans through, through, uh, maybe our loan program or something like that to incentivize people to fix up the buildings. At least if they're empty and they look nice, you know, it wouldn't be so, um, so sad to see. Um, and hopefully with these farmers' markets that are coming up, some of the, um, s- some of the ideas that are floating around from those, it seems to be helping the town look more like a town square and a vibrant center rather than just, uh, empty buildings. Um, but I'm really not comfortable with the idea of a tax. That's why I was trying to get a sense of what the Economic Development Commission was, was going for, because I agree with you that it just seems too punitive at a time when there's a lot of other things coming down. I mean, there's some changes, it looks like, going on downtown. If Joan Shirley's place is pending, maybe there's something there that's changing. I don't know what Stardos is up to.
Well, we have, uh, we have one of the Stardos Hudson's right here with us today, so we can maybe ask him.
Oh. Okay, well, I could open up to the public and we could have information on that.
You're not required.
No. No, we're not going to put you on the spot. However, I didn't see a hand up, so I will open it up to the public at this point.
That's Julie.
All right, Julie, did you have a comment on this?
Yes, I did, I just wanted to concur with a lot of our council and staff, um, with Mandy's comments on, on, let's kind of stay away from the taxation thing. Times are hard right now. We already see the breweries reselling. I don't know why, but obviously everybody's burning, this farmer could tell you. Um, so don't really take down the private property owners, per se, on another financial hardship. I am happy to hear it's been outreach. I think continued outreach is great. Um, and to really help promote people with doing more is help them research those grants. They're hard to find. Some people just don't have the resources and have other things going on. So I think continuing to communicate with these property owners in a really positive way, um, not in a, not in an enforcive way, but in a positive way, I think will be more productive, so.
Thank you. Uh, Jean, and then Haley, the person in the back, Haley, thank you. Jean? To increase the tax, um, there needs to be a vote. Is there a two-thirds percentage vote to pass a tax? I think that's a tax that's levied against citizens. I don't think it's a tax against businesses, but I could be wrong on that. Maybe we can check in there. Yeah, it's a big question. Haley?
Hi, Haley.
Really?
Um, so. I definitely think that we do need to push a positive, like, energy towards opening up businesses. Um, you know, we've been through 2020, um, and also we're going into like some economic declines. A lot of people are really suffering as business owners or owners of these, um, these spaces. So I'm just thinking that definitely taxing would not help the situation. Um, I think that, yes, we've all been in talks about what we will do, what we can do with Stardos specifically. Um, you know, we're definitely open to some more things, things just, there's four siblings who own the property. So getting four siblings all on the same page can be slightly difficult. Um, you know, and just trying to get things moving towards what can we do positively? We have talked about possibly selling the buil, building, but, you know, right now it's really, um, a bad market to be doing that, and it won't be beneficial to our family. So we are also talking about maybe, we need some help. Stardos is having some serious issues. Even being able to be open as something, like, we have to get to that point. There's a hole in the roof, there is issues with the flooring, we need a new water heater, like, things need to get cleaned up and ready to be used as a space. And we may be willing to talk to somebody about renting it out and doing a business for five to seven years, whatever that lease would detail. But like, we are not even in to a place where it could be open right now. And we want to do something, it's just been tough. Our family's been hit incredibly hard these past few years, I'm sure you guys understand. So we're trying, we just need help, and we're like, all super busy. All of us work, all of us have kids, like, there's a lot going on. So being able to talk with you guys, get it figured out and move forward is what we want to do. But a tax would really frickin' suck, so like, let's do something else, okay? I feel like we can, we can get it going. I want Blue Lake to thrive, and the businesses that have been opening end up closing. Like, we need to create longevity for our main part of Blue Lake, the heart of Blue Lake, really. So let's do that.
Thank you.
Well, it terrifies home, right? So if they tax you, that's your home.
Yeah.
Matt, and then there's, oh, have we done the hand already?
Yeah.
Okay, Julie. Yeah, all right, Matt.
Yeah, when I first moved here in 2020 and I first saw the Emporium, it was like love at first sight. I thought, it's, it's having an antique shop, when to get open, you know? Before they covered the windows, I could see all the stuff inside. But getting to know the building a little bit, I'm surprised it's not condemned. Like, the, the big marquee overhang, I think it's not earthquake safe. It needs so much work from the roof to the floor. I don't think it's humanly inhabitable. I wish it was, but the paint, it, the gutters, it's, it's, uh, and it's got a creep running underneath it. I'm surprised it's, you know, it's still standing, you know? And, and then people are living in it. Some of the abandoned quarters downtown with, I mean, underneath it with the spider webs and stuff. I don't know if someone died in there. It's a wreck. I wouldn't even, if it was open as an antique shop, I wouldn't want to work in there, you know? But I would love to see an antique shop, I really would, but I don't know how anybody could afford the insurance and the upkeep and the rebuilding and the, you know, the inspections and everything, you know?
Well, my crease been run under that building for at least 100 years.
So it's, it's a tall building.
It's gonna be okay.
But it just needs to be inspected, and like, every time I walk into that marquee, you know, I'm wondering if it's, it's all down in the earthquake or something. But I would love to see an antique shop there, so.
All right, thank you, thank you. Well, there used to be.
Yeah, there used to be.
Jackie?
I just have, just a small thing about that. I, I do feel that a tax wouldn't be appropriate. As a business owner of over 23 years in the downtown area, we know what it's like to run and operate businesses out of Blue Lake. And if you don't have a good business plan or smart ideas, it's hard to survive here. So, you know, doing a tax on somebody because they don't have a business in a commercial building, I just think it would be a little impaired.
Um, yes. And I'd just like to add to that, so I agree with every method said tonight. Just coming from a perspective of being one of the people that watched Stardos become a reality from the beginning, we opened Stardos because the community wanted a place to eat.
Yeah.
We weren't going to be a restaurant. We were originally going to be a spa. So it wasn't supposed to be a restaurant, but we were approached by Delarte and said, we need a restaurant. And so my grandparents did that. And when my dad moved to the States and started helping my grandparents, Stardos was in the bread. Stardos wasn't going to survive, it was going to close. And if it wasn't because my dad was working that shop every single day for all of the hours, and we cut our staff, so basically it was family-run, we can't do that anymore. We just don't have that ability to be able to do that, especially offering the menu that Stardos was offering. Training anybody was impossible, and then retaining whoever we trained was impossible, so.
My dad was wonderful.
Yeah, and it, it, it was difficult to keep the restaurant open. And I can't even say after all the years that it had been open, it was open for 10 years. It wasn't successful. We were, you know, scraping by every single time. Anytime we had a project, we took out another loan. And that's part of the reason why Stardos isn't open now is because we can't get it together to get out more loans to put into the building when we each have families to take care of and just the basic ma, maintenance of the building. I'm still dealing with my dad's debt, and most of it has to do with the fact that he took out so many loans to take care of a business in Blue Lake. So the issue with putting businesses in Blue Lake isn't just, you know, making sure that a business is there, it's making sure that a business can survive in Blue Lake. And I get that we are all in this together, and that having more businesses helps get that, that, um, energy into the city to be able to support other businesses. But it's, that start is going to be so hard to do, and having this tax will almost make it impossible.
And that brings up a really good point. If you look at the businesses that are in Blue Lake, the retail businesses, most of them anyway, um, they're open limited hours. A lot of the owners, operators of these businesses don't give themselves a paycheck. Um, these folks are just barely scraping by, and the only reason they're still there is because they, you know, they're not paying themselves and they, um, and they can only afford to be open limited hours. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea to have a vibrant downtown, but it's a little bit pie in the sky for Blue Lake, and maybe someday it's going to happen, you know? But it's, you know, the, the Blue Lake business model, you know, is a little handicapped, um, you know, by just, you know, so many different limitations. And now with, you know, inflation and property values and, and, you know, what people have to pay for rents and whatnot, it's just, it's just getting harder and harder. So, um, I just like, you know, I'd like to keep in mind just, just how difficult it really is, um, you know, to, to make a rent payment and to do all that you have to do to be in business and stay in business. Going into business once is one thing, staying in business is entirely something else.
Okay, back to council for possible action on this item. I never like to use the word table something, basically.
I think we should just kill it.
Splitting it away permanently, you know, for a long time, but I'm sort of at that point. But, I mean, you can bring it back to the commission with our, our concerns and ideas, Elizabeth.
Okay.
And our liaison.
Yeah.
The overall feeling, I think, is that it's built in a different direction.
Right, and, and perhaps to, um, my, uh, having meetings with downtown people to discuss what we.
Maybe with the commission reaching out and, and set your businesses to.
Well, we can make, well, we can maybe try to have, you know, set up meetings where the, you know, there's, um, you know, if a business, if a building owner wants to be, you know, have a, have a group meeting, um, you know, with some council members and, and different people, and just, and you could just have a little community thing.
Well, there, we have an Economic Development Commission, so.
Right, right.
That's a good forum right there for inviting those folks.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know the back, I don't know the background of everybody on the Economic Development Commission, but I wonder if, um, you know, I wonder if there's anybody in town that's, you know, um, that's been through the process, you know, most times, or can really advise and, and help you connect people with resources.
Well, the director, Roxanne Rothery, is involved in finances quite a bit, so she's a really great, um, resource for that kind of thing. So it might be something to think about, but.
Cindy Trovitz has an extensive background in redevelopment.
Yeah.
Everyone our commission brings value.
Yeah, and there's business owners on it as well. All right, I don't think we're going to take any action on this item, so we're going to move on to item nine, City of Blue Lake Water Deposit Policy. The city council has directed staff to review the city water deposit policy and to bring back recommendations for changes. The city staff has recommended that the policy be updated to allow the water deposits to be refunded based upon established parameters. In researching options, staff has recommended that water deposits be refunded to customers based upon a 24-month performance period. That requires payments to be received on time and without penalty. The city's billing system can be adjusted to allow the system to make refunds against the customer's billing as they meet the performance requirements. Currently, the city returns deposits when a customer disconnects service. The deposit is then applied to their final bill to ensure that the city recoups final billing extended. And the water deposit is valid in a non-interest-bearing account. I mean, some of us have lived in Blue Lake for a long time, have a deposit from a long time ago. I don't even know what it was, $36 back in 1977. Anyway, um, so I appreciate this coming before us. I wonder about 24 months, is that long enough to ensure that some? I wonder about twenty-four months. Is that long enough to ensure that something is a good?
Well.
Yeah, I was thinking of.
Yeah.
I believe.
But of course, we've lived here for a long time.
I don't know that our billing software, when we talked with Kennedy about it, um, there were some parameters and it was, um, it was twelve or twenty-four months that the system could handle. Um, I had some concerns about it as well. We do, I think twenty, it should at least be twenty-four months, um, because we do have a lot, especially rental turnovers. Um, and we, we do experience people leaving, um, without paying their bills. And so the deposit is the only thing we have to be able to pay the city back. So that does happen very frequently. So twenty-four months at least protects us from some of those immediate quick turnovers. Um, and then I think our rates of people paying their bills on time, twenty-four months is, uh, pretty steep for Blue Lake residents. I would say for people to pay for two years on time, um, would, I would say we don't necessarily have a large number that paid on time that would meet this, this, uh.
Oh, okay. All right.
So I think twenty-four months is, um, is totally manageable. The system's set up that it would just refund it against your current bills, so we don't have to go and, um, write checks. We just have to refund it back internally against our own accounting system.
How much is the mortgage?
It depends on when you moved here, um.
But right now, it's.
For a new person, it's a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, it's.
One seventy-six.
Huh?
One seventy-six.
Woo, okay.
We have, we probably have on the deposit like thirty bucks or something.
Yeah. Yeah, and then you have to go back and see people that have been paying water since nineteen seventy-seven when I moved here and say, well, you're gonna get thirty dollars back.
Yeah, you'll just get it refunded against your balance.
Right, okay. Well, um, it's a pleasure of the council. Should we move forward on this?
We could, and then maybe revisit it in two years to see how it's, you know, if, if it's dipped.
Too much?
Yeah, we could definitely, if we, if we see a problem with it, we definitely could bring it back for reconsideration. Uh, we brought this to council, I think, over a year ago, just saying that we wanted to update this policy at some point. Um, and so it's taken us a while to get here. We just had a lot of other, um, stuff going on with water and wastewater and just kind of tying this in and evaluating what those impacts would be. Like I said, it does, we do routinely, um, use controls deposits against their final bills, um, so. But I think we'll, I think we would be fine in twenty-four months.
I don't see action on this, but would you?
Uh, so. Yeah, so you would just be threatening to bring back a final policy, because I wanted to set this idea.
So you want, and you wanna re, you wanna refund after twenty-four months if they pay on time for twenty-four students?
Yes.
Right.
So that might happen. I'll never get my deposit back.
Um, is there any further discussion from council? And I'll open it up to public on this item.
Thank you, Scott Fraser. I was in the office a month ago and asked if you could put on the agenda, because I was told to sit in the works for over a year. And I'd like to speak in favor of you taking action to direct city manager to come back to you for next monthly meeting with a written proposal that you can implement. Uh, in our own case, we've been here for ten years and didn't really understand if we ever get that deposit back. So it'd be a nice thing. And I am a property owner for rental properties, so I think one thing you might wanna consider is if you can show that you have a differential of tenants in someone else's property paying you on time versus owners paying on time, because I think you could probably have a lean against the property if you're dealing with an owner that doesn't pay you. So you have, you have some different, um, opportunities there, but I would like to speak to you taking action on the city next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, thank you. Any other item, uh, comments on this item? Okay, back to council for action. Um, what's the pleasure of the council? Should we move forward on directing staff to bring back a final policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is that direction clear? So be it. All right, we're on item ten, City Council Board Commission Primary and Alternate Designations. So the reason we have to have this as an agenda item is because we had a, a change in, um, Elizabeth McKay requesting her status as the primary delegate to the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation to change. So Mayor Protem Shaw, Shaw agreed to take the primary delegate position in her place and Councilmember Edgar retains the position alternate. So we have to do this by motion because of the Maddy Act. Another layer of laws that we have to work under, even if we're.
Can I move, can I move that we make those changes as you stated?
Yes.
Exactly.
Uh, motion by Elizabeth Stefani, seconded by, Elise Stefani, I'm sorry, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to, um, make the necessary changes to the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote. All who are in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. Item eleven is our consent calendar. Is there anyone, or consent agenda? Is there anyone that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda at this time?
Well, I think I, I'm, yes, I'd like to take the caretaker's lease.
Okay, caretaker's lease. So that is item C, so we can vote on eleven A and B?
Well, the other thing I was wondering to, um, just without minutes, I don't know if everybody had a chance to go through all the minutes.
I guess.
But, um, has it been a regular practice to ask the public if they have any, um, any comments they wanna make on it?
No, it's not counting, no. Unless.
Because sometimes we're quoting the public and I thought it might be nice to, um, to give the public opportunity to weigh in on, um.
What they felt they were misquoted.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, just in general.
Well, if you would like to pull the item A, the meeting minutes.
Yes, sir, please.
All right. So then we are just voting on eleven B, the warrants and dispersments. Unless someone would like to pull that as well.
Well, there was just one item on the minutes that was incorrect.
Okay, but so we're pulling the minutes, we're pulling the caretaker's lease. So I'd like to have a vote for eleven B, the warrants and dispersments first.
We have the motion to approve the warrants and dispersments.
Thank you. All right, motion made by Angela Schell, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to pass eleven B, the warrants and dispersments, any further discussion from council? Back to public, back to council for the vote. All who are in favor say aye. Aye, it passes. Okay, now we're going to talk about the minutes, which is eleven A. And remember, if it's a typo or something like that, you can always, you know, notify staff. But if it's substantive, substance, then we need to discuss it. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Well, the only thing is, is that it says that I'm going to be the alternate, um, which we already just firm that I am not. So.
What page is that?
It is on page eight. At the bottom.
Okay, so on page eight, it says, Councilmember McKay would like to switch positions.
Yeah, we were switching, we were not switching positions. And it was not on.
I wasn't, no, I wasn't.
Oh, I see. So it's not, so that's okay. Yeah, it's just, okay, so it's.
It had you guys just switching places and I had to run to it.
But you did have it correct on the other part.
I did, I hawed it, I hawed it after, after looking at Emily's.
So it should say, Councilmember McKay would like to step down from REDEC.
Right.
And Mayor Protem Shaw will take the primary position and Councilmember.
Edgar.
Edgar will be the alternate.
Will maintain the alternate status.
Yes. Uh, page eight, at the bottom.
Yeah.
So McKay would like to step down on REDEC. Uh, Mayor Protem Shaw agrees to.
Step up.
Step up.
To be REDEC.
Okay. Dancing. And then, Councilmember Edgar will be the alternate, okay? Clear? All right, other items on the minutes. Did you have something, please? Okay, all right, we're good on the minutes. Right, so we should make a motion to, um, accept the minutes with those corrections on page eight.
So move.
Second, motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Schell to accept the minutes of April twenty-fifth, or March twenty-eighth, sorry, uh, with those corrections at the end of page eight. Any further discussion from council? Back to public, back to council for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. The warrants, oh no, the lease, we wanted to talk about the lease. The lease, you might say, the lease?
I'm just, um, I'm wondering, what are we doing? Are we just extending the term? And everything's the same? And then it remains the same, service change?
The caretaker lease is out for renewal.
It's a one-year lease?
Yeah, we are, we do this each year, um, with the caretaker lease.
And this is the sixth amendment.
We maintain the original, uh, lease and we amend the term, which is the, the one year.
And how much are we leasing it for?
Oh my gosh, I think you're gonna ask this.
I know, I ask that every time.
Six, a little over six hundred, six fifty, something like that.
It used to be where our caretaker lived, now it's for rental, basically. She did bother a lot.
There's, there's a lot of stuff that's taken into consideration there, a lot, you know, with different activities in the park and noise and things, so.
Right, she's a good.
She's a good, um, tenant in this space and she's been a long-term tenant.
How long?
Uh, this is the sixth amendment, so it's six years.
Any other questions on this item? Entertain a motion to pass eleven C, the caretaker lease.
I need to pass eleven C.
Set.
Go ahead.
All right, motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Stefani to pass eleven C, the lease to the caretaker of home. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Okay, uh, item twelve, reports of council and staff. We're gonna just kind of go around here. So Elise, did you go to any meetings?
I went to a first of ex meeting, but we already saw some stuff we didn't know about the fee schedule. And there has not been a meeting for RCEA, REDEC, and so.
Okay. Okay, I attended an HCOB meeting and if you think we have big packets, you should see what their packets look like. Lots of reading. Um, but it also means a lot of money, including money for Blue Lake. For instance, we just got, how much money was this, Blue Lake? Um, sixty thousand dollars and forty, sixty thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars approved um, for the town of Blue Lake. Now, there's other areas where you have Del Fortuna and other places get money too. Now, about half of that sixty thousand is going to our transit, which you know that we contract with the rancheria for that. The other thirty-something thousand is, is going to go for our road improvements, so there is some money there. Um, and then we also had a very interesting, oh, they declared May as Bike Month, Humboldt. There's gonna be a lot of things going on in the month of May, having to do with bikes and commuting to work and that. May twenty-twenty-three is Bike Month. Um, May twentieth, there's a big event at Jefferson School, the old Jefferson School. Um, and other than that, um, oh, we have a new fiscal administrative officer. Her name is Amy Everwine. We met her, the woman Debbie that's been here for a long time, um, is finally retiring. And, um, there was nobody from the Caltrans, but I wanted to ask them something. Anyway, that was that. And then on Friday last week, I went to the very nice, um, League of Women Voters thirtieth state of the community luncheon. And, um, I sat at a table with Maggie Fleming and Stacy Eads. Maggie is the old, uh, um, I'm not people talking about this, district attorney. District attorney, thank you. And Stacy Eads is the new district attorney. And, um, Maggie Fleming was the master of ceremonies as well. Joseph James, the chair of the Europe Tribal Council, made a very nice speech. He was the keynote speaker. And Steve Medrow, the chair of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. And a former city councilperson of Blue Lake was there also to talk about the budget, uh, that the supervisors have to do. So that was very, um, interesting and nice to attend. And other than that, I don't have anything. Okay, moving on to Angela.
I, um, was unable to attend the chamber meeting earlier this month, um, but I'm sure Emily was there. So if you feel there's anything pressing for the public to know, um, because usually everything that, like, Emily and I are there to get the same note, so, so I apologize. I was not able to make that meeting. I did go to the REDEC meeting last night, um, just standard stuff. They, we, um, we approved the twenty-twenty-four budget, um, they are expected to increase, uh, their revenue from loan interests, which is super cool. Uh, right now, they're serving sixty loans, um, and we will have further conversations on one or two that might be in default. But the budget is really good. The budget is, um, better than expected, so that was encouraging. Um, let me see, Nadalin, what is Nadalin's last name? DeLapp, um, who's the executive director of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance, came and spoke about the cannabis reform initiative that's going out to voters, March fifth of next year. So she just gave some background information, um, and her perspective on the relevance of the initiative. Then we heard for, uh, the second time, um, representative from Core Hub. And Core Hub is the North Coast, they're, they're the offshore wind community. So they're the group of, um, that are working on the offshore wind, uh, actions in Humboldt County. Um, they came to the table last month just to introduce themselves and request that REDEC become an official partner. And so we had a discussion on that yesterday, last night, and REDEC did decide, um, to become an official partner with Core Hub. Um, other community partners include the Small Business Development Center, the Rancheria in town, um, Redwood Coast Energy Authority, HCOB, Bay Keepers, um, and tribal working groups, as well as, which I thought was super cool, the Humboldt Fishermen's Association. Um, I know that there's been some contentious conversations between the fishermen and those who are developing the offshore wind projects. Um, so it was, it's really nice that the Humboldt Fishermen's Association is, is in conversations with Core Hub, particularly around the port development that's happening. Um, so that was, that was really good to hear. And that is all I have.
Make sure you can.
Let me know, let me know and see if I can.
By the way, I have an amazing spread of food. Holy, it was gracious.
So, um, I need the chamber.
Oh, the chamber. That's right, I forgot.
Yeah.
I was, it was a last-minute thing, I apologize.
So, um, I did attend the Blue Lake Economic Development, um, and we've discussed a lot about that. Um, but one thing that we did was there was a, a small business roundtable, um, slated, and I also attended that. And that was very interesting. It's about the city working with businesses to promote, um, Blue Lake, basically. Um, doing radio ads, um, and the city would match the funds, um, with people. And then the radio would match the funds with the, with the groups of people. So, um, that was very interesting. It was very well-attended, um, and I think it was pretty positive. Uh, there's a lot of things going on here. There's going to be, um, where is it? Low and Slow on, uh, Sunday, May twenty-first, uh, their one-year anniversary with a, um, a run, a five-k run at noon and, uh, the jogging shop would be involved in that. And then there'll be live music and vendors and DJs, so that's all gonna be down there. That'll be fun. Um, there is also a, um, There is also a beautify downtown, what's it called? It's got a catchy name.
Spring Up, thank you.
The Spring Up, there it is. So it was talking with, like, how to beautify our downtown with flowers and pots. And there will be, the city will be helping promote this with signage and, you know, just like, pretty it up down there a little bit to encourage people who want to hang out and encouraging the business owners to participate. And then, let's see, I guess, the other one was the Art and Heritage, which was canceled.
Which was canceled?
Yes.
Okay. All right, may I answer your report?
Well, we've been extremely busy. We've got a lot of projects that we're working on right now. We've got several projects coming to the planning commission. We've been working diligently on the housing element to meet all of the HCD regulations, requirements, and timeframes that they've placed on us. We've been conducting housing surveys. Gary's done a tremendous amount of work to respond to HCD's comments and get our draft housing element in compliance with state mandates, which a lot of what you see throughout the draft housing element is state-mandated policy requirements that the city is required to adopt. We are, we've got a lot of stuff going on in Parks and Recreation, some of the stuff that Elizabeth and Angela talked about. We've been working a lot to try and create some more energy with the businesses and the chamber and create those linkages, looking at some collective ideas for marketing to get conversations started and getting us to get ready for the sunny season. And, you know, as much as I've heard tonight commentary about business not being very conducive in Blue Lake, I would have to argue that to some extent, because I think our businesses are doing really well. We've been working closely with a lot of our businesses, and we're just seeing a continued uptick in sales and people coming out and people knowing about what we have to offer and making those connections between recreation and business. So I'm really excited to continue to see that and to work with, you know, our staff and team to continue to help that grow. I'm really, really proud of a lot of the small businesses that are really making a go of it and, you know, really starting to see some success. So a lot is happening. Emily's been working diligently at Parks and Rec, so there's a lot, a lot happening.
I noticed you don't have correspondence on here. But I don't know, I got this letter from FEMA about the temporary suspension of some applications. Maybe you got this as well.
I did.
Okay. All right, let's move on to future agenda items, since it is after.
Can I, as part of, or can I ask why we're looking for a new city engineer and planning?
Absolutely, I'm glad you asked that, because it's so, I should have addressed that. So the city is mandated to go out to bid for professional services. We do this every three to four years. This has been, this is part of contracting law, and it protects the city and ensures that we get the most competitive rates and that the city doesn't just continue with one service provider without seeing what the market trends and prices are. So we do this, this is my third time doing this, or? We had just done it when I came on, so this will be the kind of part of the last cycle and start of the third cycle. It also allows us to go out for services, for planning and engineering services that may be outside of the scope of what the city needs on a regular basis. So we cast a fairly large net. In the past, we've always contracted with SHN. They've been our long-term city planners, city engineers. I anticipate they'll definitely be submitting a proposal for services. But we also use this as an opportunity to look at other services that other engineering and planning firms may provide to the city that sometimes we have conflict issues. SHN may not be able to provide a service that we need, or they may be providing a service in conflict with what the city needs to contract for. So it allows us to bring in additional service providers as well. So we're not firing the city engineer or the city planner, like, you know, like, I guess there's been some speculation about that. We've received some calls about that, and obviously it's been posted on social media. Definitely not the case. You'll also see we're going out for building official services as well, our building officials are retiring. So we are going out for those services as well, and we do that in partnership with Trinidad, because we're both very small and we each need about a day a week of building services. It's usually not a big enough contract for people to be interested in, but going in together, it usually gives us enough hours to attract some interest. So it is a regular course of business, and it's a very important one because it protects the city from long-term contracts that aren't, you know, being looked at or evaluated for fiscal accountability.
I did have one other question. The meeting that happened with supervisor, the two supervisors and the various county officials, is that something that you're expecting to happen, are you all?
I regularly meet with other county representatives, other city managers. I have a regularly, city managers meeting. In fact, I'll be going to that on Thursday. I meet with Mike Wilson regularly, I meet with Steve Madron regularly. I work closely with the sheriff's office, with our lieutenants. So yeah, we have a lot of ongoing conversations. We have, obviously, the city is very closely connected to the county, and we have a lot of combined interests that we regularly collaborate on.
So when you're having a big group, like you just did, now we're, what Mike was saying, that it was the first time, that that's happened since before COVID. So I'm assuming that that kind of grouping doesn't happen very often?
Not going to say that. We, maybe not at city hall, but we meet out on project sites regularly. We collaborate on grant proposals. We collaborate on hosta levels for different types of reports. I meet with Public Works regularly with the county. We have shared interests with the Boulevard. We just completed a big road assessment. Our local road safety plan was a collaboration with the city and the county, and that was months and months of collaboration between our staff and the county staff. So these are conversations that are always ongoing. And it's critical that the city is involved in these conversations and that we make our needs known and that we cross-collaborate on issues. It's definitely not outside of the scope.
You're also on the technical advisory committees of several commissions like HCOG, Humboldt County Association of Governments. She's on the technical advisory committee of that, and that's all staff from different cities.
What Mike Wilson mentioned, it is posted, it's the first time that this meeting has happened since.
We just haven't had really like a sit-down like that necessarily in a small space. I mean, we, with COVID, yeah, at Mass. But we meet, we meet a lot, we have a lot of the same interests, trails, river usage.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Let's move on to future agenda items.
I have a few items here. I would like to put our noticing, our public noticing procedures back on the agenda. I'd like to get some absolute clarity about what our public noticing procedures are and if any changes are going to be made, that we do that. I feel like we had a conversation about that before, and I thought we had some agreements. But I don't know that we did, so I might have to look like that at this point. So I'd like to make that an agenda item.
All right, and.
And I think we should put the McClure issue on the agenda. And I'd like to have the budget on the agenda.
But when do we usually put the budget on the agenda? Because that's not a regular cycle, right?
So are we gonna be asked to approve the next agenda at the next meeting?
Approve the next. Budget, I mean, sorry. That's okay. I guess we will be asked to approve.
But you'll do that at the end of June.
Yeah, the budget goes through two meetings, right? Yeah. Yeah, it has to go through two meetings.
So we'll get a budget next week, next meeting, and then.
And are we just gonna be handed a packet, or are we gonna have a tutorial about budget? What are we, what are we gonna do?
Well, usually what we do is we do have the accountant come in. We prepare a draft budget, and then the accountant will come and present it with the city manager and then be able to answer questions. And then he'll be brought back. Usually it takes us until right up to the end of June, it has to be adopted by July 1st. So we'll get two looks at it.
So being a new council member, I feel like, and I've looked at our current budget, I feel like it's a pretty broad document, and I don't, I don't know if, I don't know what happens behind the scenes, because obviously what's in that budget isn't the whole picture. So I'm just wondering, is there more information that we're gonna be getting about budget process, or what?
I think it's up to each council member to decide if they need more information.
Yeah, I think you should wait till, at least when we get the budget, the draft budget in May with the accountant going over the numbers. They'll go over the numbers pretty clearly. And then if you have any further questions, you can ask them that night, or, you know, if you want to connect with them at some other time for more in-depth things.
Right, I just feel like, you know, when I'm gonna be asked to approve a budget, I wanna, I wanna understand the process a little better than I think we're gonna get just by looking at a budget and then, you know, and just the amount of time that we normally have here. So I would like to request that the accountant or whomever is most appropriate give us just a little more of a tutorial about how the budget process works, you know, before we get started kind of thing, so that, so that we have a better understanding of what we're doing.
Well, the budget will show last year's numbers and this year's numbers. So that can be something that you can compare, you know, to see how we're doing. And then, and then that adjusts the budget accordingly, if we're losing in some areas and gaining in others. I don't, I don't think you need to be too scared of it.
When I'm scared, I wanna understand what I'm doing.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't wanna vote on something I don't understand.
Yeah, and you should understand it. And I think it will be understandable when it's presented, the way it will be presented.
And so does that process also talk about whether we're, how we met our current budget, or that sort of thing?
There'll be last year's figures and this year's figures, so we'll only compare.
Budget figures, but actual expenditures to compare to the budget?
And there'll be a budget amendment that comes at the next meeting for this year's budget to true-up numbers. I mean, I think if you want to go back in depth into the budget, I don't think the council meeting is the time to do that. I think talking, maybe going over that with Scott, taking some time, would be more helpful, because I don't think during a council meeting, it's not, I don't think it's gonna give you the flexibility to ask the type of questions that you necessarily want. Sounds like you really want like a deeper dive into the numbers, and so that's not what you're gonna do.
Not so much into the numbers, but the process. I feel like, you know, looking at the budget document just doesn't, doesn't explain a lot about the process.
Well, remember, the budget is just a guide too. It's not, you know, it's not in the cement, you know, it's fluid, it can be fluid too. So, you know, there's that, we have some flexibility with it too. Any other future agenda items? Okay, let's move on to adjournment.
I'll move to adjournment, second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Scholl to adjourn. Any further discussion from council, public? Back to council for the vote. All who are in favor say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.